Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 3rd meeting of the Glendale City Council. Maybe I have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Zaga Janian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Garpedian.
Here.
Councilmember Aga Janian, would you lead us to flag salute?
Please rise.
Let's salute to the most recognizable flag in the world.
Let's make a wish to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Rich Garner from the First United Methodist Church of Glendale.
Let us pray. Most gracious God, who continues to create in us and all that we might know of our blessings and serve others with the gifts you have bestowed upon us, we are grateful for those who are raised up as leaders in our community. We are especially thankful for any who are selected to lead this council, confident that you equip the one chosen with the skills and interests, the concerns and insights necessary to guide this council and our city into a common life of greater compassion and justice. Knowing that others often observe in us what we do not see in ourselves, stir up in us a call to lead and ready us to respond with humility, trusting that others will support us in our work and join us in our efforts. Beyond seeking honor and prestige, may we rejoice that we are given the opportunity and the courage to offer what we have and who we are to the building up of a vibrant and reconciling community. Strengthen us in our resolve to fully listen before we speak, understand before we decide, and consider consequences before we act. We pray your blessing upon our new mayor, this council, and the people of Glendale. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Maybe have your report, please.
Agenda for the April 3rd, 2018 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, March 30th, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And what is next?
3A, under presentation and appointments, is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, April 10th, 2018.
Mr. Takalian.
Good evening, Mayor Garpedian, members of the city council. Next week, there's only the adoption of minutes on the Glendale Housing Authority's agenda, but in the afternoon, we will have a joint meeting of the city council and the housing authority with one item from parks, and that's the CDBG annual action plan. In the evening for city council, not too many items. There's only two consent items. The first is from Public Works regarding the Verdugo Boulevard traffic signal modification of Lehi and SR2 freeway off-ramp, followed by another report from Public Works regarding Glendale Train Station and Transportation Center first mile-last mile project. And finally, there's only one hearing, but it's going to be a long one, I presume, and that's from GWP regarding the greatest power plant's environmental impact report.
Thank you for that. What is next, please?
Mayor, the next item on the agenda at 3B is the selection of a new mayor.
I have three cards on 3B. Do we go to the cards first, speakers first, and... That probably, that's the way to approach it, Mr. ... Okay. I'm sorry, I'm a soft-spoken person. What can I say? Victoria Doschoglian. Followed by Greg Hughes. Followed by Lindsay Novis. Lindsay Novis.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers and city staff. My name is Victoria Doschoglian, and I represent Assembly Member Laura Friedman, and I have a letter that we're reading on her behalf for Mayor Garpedian. Dear Mayor Garpedian, I would like to send you my deepest appreciation as a colleague and a friend for the work that you have done for our city in your term as mayor of Glendale. You have continued to serve us well by consistently conducting your work with intelligence, creativity, and with pronounced compassion. During your term, you have led by facing each of our city's challenges with strength, grace, and a strong desire to do what is right for all who call our city home. Your continuing commitment to the people of Glendale offers great assurance that the hearts and minds of the people will continue to be heard and considered. It is my hope that the next mayor will follow in your example. We are all fortunate to have you as a mayor, council member, and friend. Thank you for your service to Glendale and to our region. Sincerely signed, Laura Friedman, Assembly 43rd District. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I also have a certificate from the assembly member.
Thank you, thank you.
That I will pass on.
Thank you very much. Please give my best to our assembly member, Laura Friedman. I really appreciate it. Greg Hughes. Is Greg Hughes here? No, okay. Lindsay, Lindsay Novis?
Lindsay Novis?
Lindsay Novis?
Are they coming in?
Oh.
Well, thanks for waiting. My communication is pretty short. I'm here really to appeal for the current mayor to stay as mayor for several reasons. I've been at several city council meetings, I read the city council notes. Probably the largest important factor of this gentleman, besides having a pretty high integrity, is he has his own mind. He's a family man, and he conducts business as a leader, which I think is the most critical factor of any mayor or any leader in any community. I can only validate what I've seen, and I don't always agree with all of his votes, but it doesn't make any difference, he's a leader. But more importantly, his values as a family person, I feel, have really directed Glendale on issues that are very critical to this city in the correct direction. That's really what I want to say. I hope the council takes that into consideration.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hughes. I really appreciate your kind words, but on the same token, that was extended to me the opportunity, that was extended to me to become the mayor by my colleagues, to serve this great city, which is the highest honor I've ever had. I think every one of us needs to have that chance to serve our city as the mayor, and but I appreciate your kind words. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next speaker is Lindsay Novis.
Hi, this communication is for you, mayor. I just came to compliment you on your fine work during your term. I've been to several council meetings, and I've noticed how well you've handled yourself and also the public, interacting with the different speakers, which are the residents of this city, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate your service.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. It means a lot to me, I appreciate it. Thank you. What is next, please?
All the business before the council is the selection of a mayor. The city clerk will now entertain nominations for the office.
I'd like to nominate Zari Sinanian.
Second.
Councilmember Devine nominates Councilmember Sinanian for the office of mayor.
Ten dollars, that's...
Are there further nominations for the office of mayor?
Move to closed nominations.
Hearing no further nominations, we will proceed with a roll call. For Councilmember Sinanian to be mayor, we will now take roll. Councilmember Aga Janian.
Yes.
Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Garpedian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
I now declare Councilmember Sinanian the duly-elected mayor of the city of Glendale.
Mr. Clerk, thank you, if I may. Do I need to be sworn in, or was this...
There is no swearing in. We will just change nameplates, but if you'd like to exchange your...
I would like to, yes, I would like to exchange. So, in appreciation for the hard work put in by Councilmember, former mayor, Batan Garpedian, council and staff, I'd like to present our former mayor with a traditional... Which is engraved with your name, and thank you very much. Well, um... Thank you all for being here today. It's been my honor and a great pleasure for me to be the mayor of our great city, our jewel city. First, I'd like to acknowledge my family members who are here. My three daughters are here, Nazali, Naira, Nellie, and my mother Mary is here, my sister Arvina is here, my in-laws, my father-in-law Malik is here, and my mother-in-law Chinor is here as well. This is, and my wife Arvina was here, but half an hour ago she had to leave because we came out of a closed session, she had to go back to the school district and get into a closed session. So, there's a transition from one closed session to another, and that's why she's not here today. But this is the backbone of our family, this is why I do what I do every day, is for my family, for my kids, to make them proud, and in the future, they say proudly that my father was the mayor of this great city, and I'm very proud of all of you, and thank you for being here, and thank you, everyone, for being here. Of course, please stand up. Everybody, stand up. Well, I had a, I had a great year, as you can imagine. Whoever, and I'm not a big Facebook person, I don't post everything on the Facebook, but whoever follows Facebook knows that the activities that I've done and the places that I went. I asked our management office to pull up the events that I attended. I attended, on our city calendar, 247 events this past year, and this does not include the events that I went, which was on my own calendar, but it was not on the city calendar. So, I believe I attended about 280 different events and meetings this past year, and I think that's what it takes. You can spend five hours a week on this, on this position, or you can spend 50 hours a week, it's up to you. I wanted to be a very involved mayor and be everywhere to represent our city the best that I could. We had so many fun, fun events and fun, fun items that we voted on, and we also had some challenging ones. ADUs were some of them, accessory dwelling units. We had to tackle the code, to change the code to allow accessory dwelling units. We addressed term limits, we imposed term limits on ourselves. We had a new city manager. We appointed a new city manager, Yasmin Beers, I want to acknowledge her, she's done a great job in the last 30 years for our city, and she's, she's, she's going to continue to do, continue the same work. We had our police department's museum approved by this council. Oftentimes, we're asked what projects this city council has approved in last year, two years ago, three years ago, and some of the downtown projects are being criticized. Since 2015, this council has not approved a mixed-use downtown project, one of those large projects. In 2017, only one hotel project was approved, and that was Park Two Code. Let me tell you what we didn't approve in the last few years, not last year at least. A demolition of a historic house on Kenwood Avenue, we did not approve that. A demolition of a historic house on Valley View, we did not approve that. Recently, there, there is a, we are looking into having a moratorium on some of the, in DSP, so we can, we can take a step back and take a breather and see what is it that we want to do in our city. You know, a few days ago, we had the Glendale Chamber of Commerce's event, and I made my remarks to state of the city over there. I want to go over a few of them, I won't be too long, I promise. Arts and culture, we have $5 million in our urban fund, and that is due to development impact fees that we received from all of the developments. Maryland Percival Proposal, we're trying to turn this into a pedestrian-friendly environment so we can have art galleries, performances, an outdoor venue to view sports games, such as World Cup, my favorite game. City council has proposed naming their portion of the Maryland to Arts Act in honor of the heritage of Glendale's Armenian-American residents. And a block south of that, we are currently engaging the public to develop the Central Park master plan, and that is where the new Armenian-American museum will be, that will be a great asset for our community. And everything that I go on over, it's been done by the vote of this council. This council is a team, everything that happens in our city, it happens because of the support and the vision of all council members here. For the 20th consecutive year, as far as housing goes, Glendale received a rating of high performer from high. There are two new affordable housing projects in the pipeline. One is the 72-units Sonora, Fifth and Sonora project, and the other one is Habitat Lomita project, which is five units. That would add about 77 units to our affordable housing roster. I was very fortunate to participate in the grand opening of Ace 121, which is another large project housing for artists that this council had the vision to approve. As far as our police department goes, and our safety, our city has a well-deserved reputation as being this, a very safe city, a very safe city, fourth in California and sixth in the nation. Homelessness, we've been very proactive, this council, not just this council, many of our predecessors, the former council members, they've been very proactive in combating homelessness. The past year, our police officers received mental health training, and select personnel, selected personnel were assigned to a specialized mental health evaluation team. So, we created a team to attack the homelessness issue as it arises. As far as our fire departments, we had our challenges with the Latuna fires, and the fire was a testament, this whole thing was a testament to our emergency response. Glendale's Emergency Operations Center was activated at 5:30 that morning, and all key personals were ready to respond to any threats to our community. And I got to tell you, I was there, I was there at 6 o'clock, every department head was there, and they were ready to go, and they knew what to do, they were well-trained, and it wasn't just a testament to our emergency response, also to our emergency communications abilities. Over 35,000 residents received information throughout, through the city's electronic newsletter. 2 million saw emergency alerts through the city's social media platform that were shared by major outlets. As far as our parks go, we have invested in our park facilities over the last year to ensure safety, enhance programming, and promote community engagement. We will see two new soccer fields in partnership with GUSD, Glendale High School District, had improved aesthetics at the civic auditorium, restored the Japanese tea house and Friendship Garden, and built an ADA compatible restroom facility in Wilson Park. We are currently working on South Glendale Community Plan, which includes areas of the city of, south of the 134 freeway. Economic vibrancy has been always the forefront of our fights. A few prominent new businesses has opened in Glendale, as well as some of them expanded, just to name a few, Service Titan, Age of Learning, and Tesla. We also had a brokers open at Nestle's building to promote that building and lease the vacancies that we have there. As our commerce, Glendale has seen an increase of 4.2 million in sales tax revenues last year. For the sixth, and for the sixth consecutive year, your city council was able to balance the general budget completely. As far as mobility goes, we hosted the first declivier in Glendale that connected downtown Glendale to Atwater Village. Over 40,000 people were in attendance, and also Metro recently passed a motion to conduct a study for two additional train stations and the use of DMU technologies. We also issued an RFP for, to study the feasibility of the streetcar that would connect our transportation center to Americana, to Galleria, to downtown, to the business district up north on First Phase, and the second phase would be connecting Glendale to Burbank Airport. But we have challenges in our future, as you all know. As far as our GWP goes, once again, GWP received national recognition by the American Public Power Association for the highest degree of reliable and safe electric service. We, EIR, we have, we have an EIR coming up in April 10th, and I encourage everyone to show up for the grace and repowering to voice their opinion, because we like to hear from everybody. I went over all the, all the numbers at the, at the, at the event, I'm not going to go over it, but on a totally different front, I'm asking all of us to not forget who gave us the freedoms we enjoy, allowing each of us to pursue the American dream, our veterans. As a nation, we can easily be distracted and forget. So let us not forget the brave men and women who have served in our armed forces that helped make us who we are today. It is the spirit of selflessness that inspired me as your mayor to contribute to the Glendale Veterans Coalition cause and purchase a battlefield cross, a fallen soldier battlefield cross. In return, I received the United States flag used in the Memorial Day ceremony in Glendale from the coalition, and I'm very humbled by that. In closing, I want to, I want to thank my family and the unwavering support in everything I do, and I want to thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity to serve as the mayor, and I'm, as I mentioned, this is a team that runs this city, this, everything that happens in our city is because of the teamwork that we have up here, and I'm looking forward to work with our new mayor, Mayor Sinanian. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember, former mayor, Batan Garpedian, for his year of intense service to the city of Glendale. I know he mentioned those numbers, the number of events that he attended over the last year, and to an untrained eye, it may be just a number, but as someone who's served mayor before and was an active mayor as well, I assure you, it's no easy task. It's actually very taxing, and it comes at the expense of everything else in your life, often involves family. So, I also understand his sentiment about the gratitude that he feels for his family for being there for him and making it possible for him to do this difficult task. So, congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Dear friends, first thing I want to do after congratulating Councilman Garpedian is thank my colleagues for this high honor, for entrusting me with the responsible, with the responsible task of being Glendale's mayor. As with my previous mayorship, the following one will be a year of inclusiveness, of working cooperatively together with my colleagues on the dais for the benefit of Glendale and its residents.
its residents. I also want to thank my family, my wife Lori, for always being there and making my work on city council possible. My children, Anahit, Mahes, Arama, and Arag, and my parents, Nurhan and Hersile, for the love with which they surround me. My sister Alice, who isn't here unfortunately, but who's a pillar of love and support for me as well. They're all here in attendance, so thank you. I want to take this opportunity to talk about the most precious resource that the city of Glendale has, which is its people, you all. Glendale's human capital, most importantly, its children, are the only guarantee of its bright future. The responsibility of this leadership body and the mayor is to ensure that the subsequent generations has a strong foundation to build upon. Therefore, we must continue to ensure that our streets are safe, our parks and libraries are accessible and well-equipped, our schools are secure. We must also ensure that our human capital has places to live, jobs to work at, and schools in which to learn and excel and forge our next generation. Therefore, one of my key priorities is to ensure that we create as much low-income and workforce housing as possible. We must make sure that the housing crisis that has afflicted the city of Glendale as well as the region, and by all indicators will continue afflicting us in the near future, impacts our most vulnerable residents as little as possible. To this end, we will do the groundbreaking of Fifth and Sonora in May, seek additional funding for more projects, and continue to aggressively look for housing opportunities, and cooperate with states, with the state to expand our housing stock and provide shelter for our elderly, economically disadvantaged, and our veterans. We will continue to work with our state and federal legislators to curb the ever-reducing housing funding and to promote policies and legislation that expands state and federal funding for low-income and workforce housing. Furthermore, we must continue to expand our economy with policies such as my tech initiative, and continue to strengthen the downtown with an eye towards increasing its stature as a major business center, continuing our efforts to bring modern mass transit to Glendale through efforts such as the Glendale Streetcar, Hiccup Rapid Transit, bringing to fruition the Maryland-Artsakh-Pasco Project, which will create significant additional open space in downtown and activate a part of Glendale that has remained stagnant in the past decade. Creating more green space and working space, and walking space will require our continued and deeper cooperation with Glendale GUSD in order to more optimally use the green spaces at our school, after-school hours. As throughout the previous five years on Glendale City Council, fiscal responsibility and general financial help will remain a focal point during my mayorship. City Council in your neighborhood will be returning to your neighborhood to strengthen the ties between City Hall and the various neighborhoods in our city, from far north, La Presena, neighborhood of Glendale, to Adams Hill, from Emerald Isle to the northwest. It is essential that we continue treating our city as one whole, as one organism, each component, part, component, part of which cannot exist in the healthy, in the healthy without the other. For in reality, there is no north or south in Glendale, there is no east or west in Glendale. We're merely blessed with different neighborhoods, but at the end, we all live in the same city, in the same region, we fight the same problems, we're affected by the same challenges, and we all have the same hopes and dreams for our children, ourselves, and our families. With respect to the environmental health of our city, and the Grayson repowering in particular, I will continue to propagate policies that are fiscally responsible, forward-thinking in terms of the technologies that we invest in for the next 30 years, and not merely the next five. It is essential that we spend our residence tax dollars responsibly and gear for the emissions mandates of the future. It is also important to adhere to our obligations under the mayor's National Climate Action Agenda. When last year, after US abandoned the Paris Accord, I proposed that Glendale join mayor's National Climate Action Agenda, and we did so, I fully intended for our city to stick by its commitments. In the coming weeks, I will ask staff to look at the possibility of transforming one of our less-attended libraries into an exclusively children's library and learning center. I will also seek a charter review, an activity which has not been conducted in decades. Finally, I will initiate a mayor's nonprofit summit, a mini-summit intended to introduce our nonprofits to each other, foster better integration, cooperation, elimination of redundant efforts, and therefore, more optimal use of our resources. Once again, thank you all. I will continue to need your advice, help, and support as we embark on another year of hard work to promote our cities and our residents' welfare. Okay, I think we can get on with the regular agenda.
Before you, Mr. Mayor, before you get on with the regular agenda, I'm sorry, I have to excuse myself because I have another event to attend to. So with that, I want to thank everyone again for being here again, and the rest is yours. Good luck.
Mr. Clerk, what's the next agenda on the item?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is the consent items, including minutes following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed. The only request we've had is for item 4C to be pulled by a member of the public.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any items they want to pull off the agenda?
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Vocal, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Harpetyan?
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Mr. Clerk, will you read item 4C into the record?
Item 4C is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding acceptance of Measure H funding.
Mr. Clerk, may I interrupt you for one second? Yeah, anyone that is not here for an agenda item, you can leave. Mr. Clerk, I think it's safe to proceed.
Director of Community Services and Parks regarding acceptance of Measure H funding from the County of Los Angeles to the city of Glendale, continuum of care. C1 is motion authorizing city manager to accept, execute, and implement direct Measure H funding from the County of Los Angeles Chief Executive Office, Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, and the Department of Health Services in amount of $127,556 for five eligible homeless strategies approved by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Two, motion authorizing the city manager to accept, execute, and implement Measure H funding from the Housing Authority of the County of Los Angeles in the amount of $15,400 for Measure H homeless strategy B4 and homeless incentive program. Three, resolution appropriating direct Measure H funding in the amount of $127,556 and $15,400 for a total of $142,956.
Okay, we have a speaker card request, we actually have two, from the same person for items 4C1 and 4C2. Ms. Ramirez, Chinook Ramirez? Yeah, we'll wait. Ms. Ramirez, you requested time on both items, I'll just give you four minutes to go.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Thank you kindly. This is 4C subsection 1, is that the one?
One and two, just.
Okay, thank you. I am not aware of the five homeless strategies approved by the LA County Board of Supervisors, since they do all their crooked, bad deals behind closed doors. That includes the most unscrupulous, unethical political panders, Mark Ridley Thomas, and Hilda Solis, and Sheila Kuehl, and Al, since they don't pay for these bogus programs, nor do they live on the streets. And they, excuse me, they should have appropriately, sorry about that.
It's okay.
And I'm, I'm, I'm a pretty, moreover, these are, there are, I think there are six groups of people. There are the homeless, traumatized, drug addicts, and military veterans who should be cared for and taken care of, housed, and not be on the streets, whether they are drug addicts or not. They have, they have exemptions, they should be cared for from mind, body, soul, and spirit, we should care for them. Number two, victims of crime and gang stalkings. Number three, mental indigent, indigent chronic homeless individuals. And four, homeless, homeless citizens who are non-drug addicts, and then homeless baby boomers, non-drug addicts, and millennials who are drug addicts, and then those who are not drug addicts. But by God, you do not lump them together, you do not put a junkie with a non-junkie, it just doesn't make any sense. And what the county board of supervisors and others have done is that they've imposed hardship on a lot of these wonderful homeless individuals through no fault of their, theirs, and again, there's homelessness by design, right here. The hardship that the homeless, non-junkies endure is, and is subjected by, the junkie homeless individuals are egregious. I urge all of you to take a walking, skid road, ask yourselves, could you live next to those individuals night and day, 24/7? Could you, would you, live with them in the, in the state of mind that they are in, in the manner that they live? It is despicable, it is hard, and no one should be subjected to that kind of life. The others, again, there are people who are homeless, and that should not be, that should not be done by the county board of supervisors, they have no credibility. And the other one, I would highly recommend a safe, healthy, clean, disinfected area or areas that will provide 24/7 showers, bathrooms, laundry facilities, kitchen, vending machines with microwave ovens, coffee pots with disposable utensils for the use of the homeless people, and those that are heavily on drugs, booze, and other substance abuse, narcotics, they should be immediately, immediately put into rehab or shelter away from legal, law-abiding homeless people, for these are addicts and also nasty, filthy, gang-banging Latinos who should be kept away from the general public. They continuously pose a life and public safety threat, because there's always theft. If all of you deal with it, every day we deal with theft, 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 and we have to spend our money replacing, replacing, replacing. And for those of us who are homeless, we have to spend money just to go into the bathroom like Jack in the Box, any restaurant, Burger King, any other restaurant, we have to spend money. Homelessness is not cheap, it's expensive. So God bless America, we need to change the way you handle your homeless issue. Again, many are brought to homelessness by design. Those of us who are hereby designed homeless, we are brought down because of people who are vengeful. And again, we need to start, we need to shut down the gang stalking programs, we need to stop the tenant harassment, we need better attorneys, because 99.9% of the attorneys are crooks. There are no good tenant attorneys that will protect you from landlord tenant law. We need good landlord tenant lawyers, and there are none. And that ain't the ACU, man, there are a bunch of overzealous gang-banger protectors. God bless Donald Trump, and God bless America.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Folks, the First Amendment reigns supreme here, so I know that offensive things were said, but it sort of comes with the territory. This dais does not condone anything that was said, so let's just go with that. All we're doing is we're accepting our portion of Measure H monies for this year, right?
That is per, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Vocal, please.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Harpetyan?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian, thank you.
Thank you. Next items, council and staff comments?
I'd just like to congratulate our new mayor and wish you good luck in the coming year.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I'd like to echo those remarks, congratulations, you, this isn't your first rodeo, and someone who's been there a couple times, the second one is a little better than the first.
Thank you.
You know where the pitfalls are.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Hopefully, you're gonna have easy ride, hopefully. What I want to talk about is the Grayson again. I'm hoping that our Glendale Water and Power Department will consider renewable energy, again, approximately for 100 megawatt. And the balance of it, the gas generation is fine with me, because we are living at a time that we cannot just rely only on reliable, I mean, renewable energy, in my opinion. If we want to do it now, some gas generation units and some gas should be used to power Grayson. So this is just a reminder, today is not the day, that we will discuss next week, we will discuss this issue, I'm just reminding our group to work on this idea also. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Genian, next item, please.
Next item is the community event announcements, a three-minute portion, as well as the public comments for anyone who wishes to undergo their five-minute event announcement, or five-minute public comments at the conclusion of the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I have three cards. First is V Valentine with an announcement, followed by Saro Kerconian.
Hi, good evening. I wish I were as good a speaker as Ms. Ramirez. But how about a read? I came to talk about Harvey.
What, about what, I'm sorry?
About Harvey.
Harvey.
I live in Sycamore Canyon, in the hillsides that make Glendale beautiful and green. Who would want to change the topography? But the home and land flippers are thriving here, endless cement trucks are roaring here, hundreds of them. One would think there's a limit on how much cement a developer would be permitted to dump onto the mountains. Okay, so now to Harvey. To protect one of such indigenous, your green oak trees, a very important resident named it Harvey. One day, I'll tell you his name. A famous name in Hollywood. No, not named after that one. I will give you a hint. It is the name of a famous Jimmy Stewart invisible friend, the six-foot rabbit named Harvey. And no, it is not invisible, it is real. This gigantic oak tree has a good friend, the sycamore tree, she is named Hillary. I'm gonna laugh myself. Why Hillary, I don't know. The two together make up an important gateway to the wildlife to cross the Chevy Chase Speedway. I wish you happy Easter, Harvey. No, and this is not an April Fool's. Thank you.
Saro Kerconian, followed by Frank Gallo.
Honorable Mayor Sinanian, honorable city council members and leaders of Glendale City, first, I want to, it's such an honor for me, Mayor Sinanian, to be here on your day that you were selected as the next mayor of Glendale. I want to say, as a proud citizen of Glendale, I love living in Glendale, it's a joy to be here, I have my family, my wife and children, it's such a joy to live here, and I attribute that to the phenomenal management of the city that all of you do, and I congratulate you, and I'm grateful for your public service to this community. I'm here today on behalf of the Armenian Genocide Committee, representing the Armenian Genocide Committee, and I'm wanting to invite all Glendale residents to attend the March and Rally for Justice on April 24th at 12 noon at the Pan Pacific Park, the march starts there, and then it proceeds for about a mile, mile and a half to the Turkish Councilite, where the Armenian community and all members of Glendale who would wish to attend, we are going to recognize and remember the Armenian genocide, and also make our demands to the Turkish Councilite and the Turkish Council General for recognition of the Armenian genocide and reparations for what President Theodore Roosevelt called the greatest crime of the First World War. Earlier today, at the start of this meeting, we saluted the United States flag, and part of the March for Justice and the Rally for Justice, we remember and reflect upon the humanitarianism and the benevolence of the American people during the Armenian genocide. It may not be remembered as much today, but great Americans like Henry Morgenthau, President Woodrow Wilson, and Cleveland Dodge, they came to the aid of over 130,000 Armenian orphans at their hour of greatest need, and so at the March and Rally for Justice, we paid tribute to them as well. And so, again, I'd like to... And so, uh, I, again, I'd like to welcome everyone to attend. Um, I also want to take this opportunity, the last minute, to thank the city of Glendale for every year commemorating our, the genocide, remembering the one and a half million victims of the genocide, and also holding many events to commemorate our, our martyrs. So thank you, and again, congratulations, Mayor Sananian.
Thank you, thank you, sir. And Frank Gallo?
Frank Gallo, Glendale Coalition for Better Government. First of all, I would like to congratulate you on being the new mayor. And, um, second, a few weeks ago, um, I asked for a cost of service analysis on the proposed Grayson upgrade. I have not seen the cost of service analysis COSA published anywhere. But I see that Mr. Zorn continues saying that the upgrade will not result in increased electric rates. Without a cost of service analysis, that is an unsupported claim. We are talking of a $500 million project that will cost rate payers at least $28 million in interest and amortization every year. When the utility sold $280 million last fiscal year, a 13% hit to the utility's costs will be com, will not be completely offset just by product, uh, production cost savings. Where is the financial analysis? Show us that you can pay for the project with the savings. That's the way to do it. Furthermore, Mr. Zorn is saying that there will be reduced reserve needs, but the utility is using no reserves to pay for at least part of this project. That is what reserves are for, and that is clearly stated in the city charter. Again, the only way to calculate that will be to see the COSA, and that analysis has not been presented to substantiate Mr. Zorn's claims. Last week, Councilmember Najarian mentioned that when he voted for the DSP, he did not foresee the long-term consequences of that project, of the, or that plan. Here, we are looking at a project with a tremendous cost, $500 million. And you are not able to see the detailed repercussions to the rate payers. You will be asked to certify the EIR next week. Shouldn't you have a full deck before you start playing your cards? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Ms. Beers, are we doing a COSA on Grayson repowering?
There is a COSA that is going to be before the city council as part of the budget study session for the rates that are moving forward for electric and water. And as part of the, um, bonds that will be coming forward if Grayson is approved, we will have an entire financial analysis that will be provided to the city council as well as the community. Two separate issues.
Two separate, so as of now, there is no COSA that has calculated Grayson's?
We have the calculations in place, and we're working with our contractor, and all of that information will become available as we move through the, the draft EIR to the certification of the EIR, and then moving forward if the council so desires to move forward with the project. All that will become available.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Jay Geisenheimer. I think I got that right. Thank you. Followed by Larry Morehouse.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Congratulations. Jay Geisenheimer, 21-year Burbank Rancho resident and an equestrian, living with a horse in my backyard. I brought some pictures so you could see what, what that looks like. In reference to the Silver Spur stables at 1,900 Riverside Drive, request for a zone change from commercial equestrian to multifamily residential, there are many people who want you to deny this request. At this time, we have over 1,000 signatures on the petition, and we have just started to announce. I will be, I will be receiving a letter of support from the Los Angeles Equine Advisory Committee, the Foothill Association, Equestrian Trails, this is representing thousands of equestrians, and other equestrian groups. We are working hard to gather our support for this denial. Please check our website, savetherrancho.org. What we are talking about is one block in Glendale, one block that is all we are asking to preserve. On this block is three boarding stables consisting of less than three acres. The lot in question is 28,000 square feet. The land between Silver Spur and the adjacent boarding facility is the trail to the perimeter, the Los Angeles Equestrian Center, and our 54 miles of trails in Griffith Park. A large portion of this trail would disappear, and most likely, this is a prescriptive easement and difficult to remove. Over 100 horse and riders in Burbank come down Chavez to access this Allen Street Trail, and they would be endangered by the loss of access to the trail right there and be forced to ride along Riverside to Irving to access trail system or a six-foot path too narrow and for only one horse in one direction. Also, a small part of the land of Silver Spur is possibly in Burbank. Burbank City Council supports our rancho as out of 785 homes and 180 condo and townhouses in the rancho, 600 homes and 120 condos and townhouses are in Burbank. The Glendale Rancho is a small area. In order for you to completely understand the negative impact to our already small area, we would like you to come out and see what this is. I don't see how you can make a decision without looking at this block. I and Joanne Hedge will be calling you this week to schedule an appointment with each of you to come and see exactly what it is and why this would be such a poor decision to allow this zone change. As equestrians, we have a very specific and small area of housing and trails, and we are not asking for more. We are just asking for our little bits and to be able to keep them. I believe in property owners' rights, but there is a fine line when a property owner can cross over the line and create a negative impact for the good of the surrounding neighborhood, and this is what is happening. The wolf is at the gate, don't let the horses out of the barn. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Morehouse, followed by Monica Campagna.
Good evening, council. Congratulations, Mayor. I'm here tonight to talk about the EIR that's coming up next Tuesday for the power plant. I've studied the power plant. I was a plant superintendent for 20 years. I probably know the history of the Grayson Power Plant better than anybody in Glendale. So I've got a comment that I want to make here to help you make your decisions. It was my job, along with other employees who, who worked there, to provide electrical power to our city of Glendale. The plant was old when I was employed by the city, but we all had a job to do, and in order to supply power to the city. And that is what we all done with success. Most of us are all retired now or have passed on into the power plant in heaven. However, I still monitor the power plant and its activity and have gotten to know some of you over the years. Our city is at a time where we need to make the decision of keeping Grayson or replacing it or letting it die. One of the most important things that our city will always need is electrical energy. It was the city council, long before you all, that made the decision to build Grayson, and all of those afterwards that added to it or maintained it. Now today, it is your responsibility to do the same, and this is why I am here. After following this process and listening to those that have concerns, I have decided to recommend that we approve of the full recommendation that has been provided to you by GWP and the team engineers. Along with this, I am also recommending that you give the order to GWP that they are to work very hard with all of our residents to encourage the use and installation of solar and battery uses, so in time, the power plant Grayson will no longer exist, and it will be another council that will make those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Campagna, followed by Susan Jakar.
Congratulations, Mayor Sananian.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Um, thank you for this opportunity to continue my article from the future. I think it's great that I came after the last gentleman because I think the time is now, um, for the change. So, uh, Glendale City Council's bold decision back in 2018 to find new ways to power their city internally with and beyond gas resulted in a myriad of forward-thinking solutions that have inspired many cities since. They drastically increased their then $900,000 solar incentives budget to match demand, knowing that the vast amount of real estate for gathering solar was from private rooftops. Their, their Glendale system since did not disappoint. Each year, hundreds of homeowners who had previously not been able to attain rebates were finally able to invest in their own systems, just like me. Realizing the importance of home side battery storage and transitioning Glendale to a clean energy future, GWP updated their existing electric service requirements to include the safe deployment of new battery energy storage technologies. They created a streamlined permitting process, keeping up with Edison and LADWP who had proactively tested batteries back in 2017, knowing how in-demand these systems would be, thanks to rebate programs offered by the state of California. This allowed many homeowners and businesses to pretty much take care of their own power needs with backup batteries, easing demand on the, from the utility. Going further, the city built upon its Greener Glendale initiative, requiring all developers not only to leave space for, but to actually add solar and battery storage to their new properties, a requirement that investors have been more than happy to make for the privilege of building in the Jewel City. Systems are sized just like parking lots based on size and use. New single-family homes also had to meet minimum solar system requirements. No one complained because all of it was the price of doing business in Glendale, added to property values, and in the long run, it saved these families' money. In addition to this private investment, every college, every city-owned facility in Glendale was slowly upgraded with solar installations for their buildings and their parking areas. Every year, residents who have had their roofs replaced, they also found help from the city. Right after permitting the roof, the inspector can connect the homeowner to the local solar installers, who offer the residents the best deal on pricing and can guarantee the rebates from the city. "It's been a solar boom," local solar business owner XYZ said. "Our businesses jumped 1,000%. We had to hire hundreds of new technicians just to meet the demand." And you can guess what that meant? Good jobs for Glendale. None of this happened overnight, but it was the unity and the foresight of that brave five-member council that paved the path to the cleaner air we now breathe in Glendale. Sustainable, clean, self-sufficient, and profoundly reliable, Glendale, Glendale's new repowering truly answered the call of the ages. Thank you so much, city council, for all the weeks of listening to me, and I hope to,
Thank you for being persistent.
I'm hoping for a good outcome next week, thank you.
Thanks. Susan Jakar, followed by Derek Now.
So serious. Hello, congratulations, big man. All right. Uh, my name is Susan Jakar. I live at 1841 Tamerlane Drive, and as a board member of the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, I'm looking forward to seeing all of you at our upcoming Glendale Dodger Night 2018. Do you have the? There it is, thank you. Okay, we still have tickets available at glendale dodger night dot com, and your ticket purchase directly supports the One Glendale Free After School Sports Program. Naturals-led hikes, our Friday night lecture series, campfire nights up at Duke Magin Park, and in South Glendale, trail restoration, riverwalk cleanups, and more. I love finding out who our biggest Dodger fans are, but honestly, I'm in it for the Dodger dogs and the swag. So I would like to encourage as many of our baseball-loving residents and friends to come out to the ballpark on May 11th. Thank you, everyone here and everyone watching at home for your time and support. Let's keep the Jewel City glittering. Yay!
Thank you, Sue. Derek Now.
I, I wasn't sure if I got your last name correctly.
You got it right, thank you.
Okay, all right.
This is my first time speaking, so I wanted to thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I'm also gonna speak about the Grayson repowering. But first, I'd like to thank all of you for your continued diligence and ongoing conversation and being willing to tackle this difficult problem. I know it's probably been a lot, so thank you. I have three primary concerns that I'll outline briefly, um, and they all sort of revolve around the $500 million price tag. I'm really concerned that that seems like a lot of money to spend on what I perceive as antiquated technology and/or a outdated mode of thinking as far as gas versus renewables. And I, I also agree that there is probably a requirement for gas to be there, but I think there should be a priority in renewables. It's my perception that the, uh, repowering for gas, the study that's been done, uh, is a potential or actual conflict of interest in as far as the, the folks bringing that study forward. And then finally, I think that it's, uh, a matter of when, not if, that California renewable energy laws, uh, force a plant like Grayson offline. And it would be a shame to have spent all that money or be on the hook for all that money and then have that, uh, not work out. And I would like to urge you, uh, to please consider, uh, integrating renewable energy as much as possible, uh, now and in the future. And thanks very much, I know it's a lot for you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. And that is my last speaker card, which means we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Item 9A is a hearing. 9A is Director of Community Development regarding Hotel Indigo, 241 North Maryland Avenue, floor area variance, parking exception, combined Stage 1, 2 design review, ground lease agreement, parking maintenance, and operation agreement. 9A1 is a, uh, motion confirming that the proposed project, addendum to the certified downtown specific planning EIR, has been considered prior to a final decision on the proposed project. And two is a motion adopting findings to approve a variance to allow FAR of 3.26. Three is a motion adopting findings to approve a 58 space parking exception. Four is a motion approving Stage 1, 2 design. Five is introduction of ordinance approving a 55-year ground lease agreement and parking maintenance and operation agreement by and between the city of Glendale and our three real estate investors, LLC California Limited Liability Company, for the development and operation of Hotel Indigo.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing at this time and probably go to staff. Mr. Lanza-Fame?
Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, um, I'm going to pass this on to Darlene Sanchez, Acting Assistant, uh, Director of Community Development, but before doing so, just wanted to, um, frame this, this item. Um, as, as you know, and, and are very aware of the fact that in 2015, uh, this council, wholeheartedly and, and fully, um, went after, uh, the idea of having, um, some boutique-style hotels in the city of Glendale, and one of the ones that was high on the list for the city council, especially, uh, Mr. Najarian and Mr. Sananian, at the time where we had attended ICSC, one of the biggest development conferences, um, in Southern California and in the nation, uh, Indigo was at the top of that list. And, um, in terms of your vision, uh, the staff went out and, and did a whole lot of work, uh, in the last few years, uh, and this evening is a culmination of a lot of work by council behind the scenes, staff when it came to the development piece of it, and of course, the developers and, and the entire team that is here from, uh, the, the business itself. Um, and, and Darlene will, will do all the introductions, but I just wanted to foundationally put that out there, it's, there's been a lot of work associated with, with this, and we are before you, uh, this evening, um, so that you can take a look at the Stage 1 and 2 in terms of design, as well as look at the business terms and make a decision in terms of what you believe to be the best policy direction, uh, for this council and this community. With that, I'll have Darlene Sanchez, uh, give you the deal points. Darlene?
Thank you, Mrs. Beers. Uh, good evening, Mayor Sananian and council members. Uh, tonight, as Mrs. Beers says, does mark an important culmination of our economic development goal that was set forth over two years ago. Um, as part of the city's economic development goals, the recruitment of a high-quality
the recruitment of a high-quality boutique hotel to our downtown has been part of a strategy that continues to build upon our 18-hour-day city. Whoa. Little preview there. So just to echo some of Mrs. Beers' comments, this is a history of how we got here. Indeed, as part of our attraction efforts, we met with business owners, visitors of downtown. This desire for a hotel, but specifically an on-trend boutique hotel, was something that Glendale continued to be missing. Additionally, the revenue generation that could be realized with TOT was an attractive incentive. And as we look at a city asset, the ability to maintain that parking spots was also something that we looked to do. So with that, we did hold meetings with IHG, several at ICSC and some in Glendale. And IHG, it's important to note, they're one of the world's leading hotel companies. They offered a product that fit Glendale on what we were looking for, and that was Hotel Indigo. Reps with IHG confirmed their interest in Glendale, and from there, we began working with hotel developer R3. Under an exclusive negotiating agreement, we looked at project feasibility. Specifically, we look at design, pricing, hotel brand, as well as the replacement of this public parking. Oh, thank you so much. So through this due diligence work, we structured a ground lease that would look at how we make this project viable, as well as maintain our asset management goals to provide public parking while also realizing a greater use of the property. There is a 55-year term being proposed with four 10-year renewal periods. Minimum hotel quality is being set by the AAA 3 diamond rating standards. That has been something that has been at the forefront of our discussions and very important. A request to purchase provision is included in the lease before you. This is common in ground leases, but because this is a unique situation in that we are a public entity, we are not able to bind a future council. So at those years, this matter would be brought before the council, and you would require a forfeit council of it. Again, the jobs program, forefront of our discussions with the development team and a part of your lease agreement, we wanted to create job opportunities and recruitment specific to City of Glendale residents, and a parking maintenance and operation agreement. And I'll go into that a little bit more. So the parking and maintenance and operation agreement is part of the ground lease. It's a main component that outlines the responsibilities of the development team to build the public parking component on site. It requires them to maintain that parking, the surface, the sidewalks, repainting, landscaping, anything you could think of that would maintain that of a high quality. And on the city's end, the public parking component would still be run by us. So we would install individual meters within that garage, and we would also maintain and collect the revenue generated from the parking. And when we look at the terms related to rent, we wanted to capture a base rent that was reflective of the market value of the property. But again, to be fair, we also needed to credit the tenant for building and maintaining the public parking component of this. And at year four, we want to share in an additional percentage of revenue that generate from the room revenue. And I'll show you what I'm talking about in the summary sheet. So here you see is a chart that summarizes how the rent is structured. First, a column indicates the year. So beginning at year one, operating year one, the tenant would pay rent. Second column reflects the annual base rent. This base rent is based on the value of the land. You apply a capitalization rent, and that value comes out to $318,000 a year. Further, this amount is subject to regular CPI increases going forward. The next column you have here is the rent credit I referred to in the last slide. Because of the large capital outlay that's required by the leasing to replace these parking lots, along with the responsibility to maintain, it is appropriate to reimburse the tenant for this cost. And the way that we've structured it is to reimburse this as a credit through the ground lease. And then the fourth column you have here, a participation rent. This is something that we had negotiated early on with the development team. This goes above and beyond whatever the established fair-market value rent is. So for instance, it is based on their room revenues, their gross room revenues. So beginning in year four, should the room revenue rate, 1% of that gross revenue actually exceed $318,000, we would collect that amount minus the rent credit. In later years, when the rent credit does not apply, you would not have that rent credit. So you would either collect the higher of the annual base rent, or you'd collect the 2% of the room revenue or 3%. And lastly, the fourth column just outlines... Yes?
It doesn't say here higher. It just say 54K or 2% of room revenue, where it says the larger of...
So right here, as part of the bigger terms, the ground rent is the greater of the base rent or the participation rent.
I'm reading from this chart here.
Yes. The chart was really to summarize, just so you can get an understanding of what those numbers look like against one another. But again, the main component of that rent is to collect the higher of the two.
It says somewhere...
It says it in the lease, yes. And then right here, just so I can break it out, I didn't want... A lot of times with charts, when you crowd it too much, it's more difficult to read. But in these larger terms, it does indicate that the greater of the base rent. So with that, the last column really does the math for you and tells you what the obligated amount would be paid by the tenant. So with that in summary, that really captures the largest business terms that are part of the ground lease. I'm going to turn this presentation over to our city planner, Dennis Cho. Dennis is going to walk you through the discretionary actions that are required as part of this project. After Mr. Cho, we have the team's architect, as well as the traffic engineer. We have representatives from IHG. We have the development team, as well as their operator that they would also bring on. So you have the full gamut, the full team here for you tonight to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm just going to break into briefly go over the project site on this site on the slide here, which the project site is outlined in the yellow area on the map. It's located on the southwest corner of California and Maryland. It consists of five city-owned parcels and is approximately 25,000 square feet. It's located in the Downtown Specific Plan Transitional District. Currently, it's developed with a 66-space city-owned parking lot. Just to go over context of the project site, there's two photographs on the right on this slide. The top one is from the corner of California and Maryland, looking southwest of the parking lot, and this is of the 24-Hour Fitness and the Goodwill Store. On the right, on the lower portion, is from Maryland of the parking lot. And in the background is where Lola's, and behind the trees is generally where Charles Billiards is located. Just wanted to give you context of what's surrounding the project site. So once again, on the left-hand side is kind of a key. The project site's outlined in yellow, and on the right-hand side, there are photographs, and they are... You can use the left-hand side where the key is, since the photo on the top right is highlighted in red, that's the location on the map. So giving context, on the corner of Brand Boulevard in California, once again, this is the 24-Hour Fitness Goodwill Store. And then south of the project site is a two-story commercial building. And continuing around the project site, on the northeast corner, is an existing three-story residential multifamily building. And directly to the east across Maryland is the Masonic Center and a three-story medical office building. And finally, continuing south, as you go down Maryland, is the rear of the Alex Theater and then the Lemley Lofts at Wilson and Maryland. Briefly going over the summary of the project, the applicant's proposing to demolish the 66-space city-owned parking lot and is proposing to construct a new hotel. The hotel will be six stories and 80 feet in height, approximately a little bit under 81,000 square feet, will include 140 guest rooms, include a two-level subterranean garage, and will include amenities such as a restaurant at the ground level with a ground outdoor dining area, a second-floor pool deck, and a rooftop deck. This project also involves a alley vacation and relocation. So this slide here has a site plan of the property, and shaded in green is the existing configuration of the alley on the site, which bisects the project site. The applicant is proposing to vacate portions of the site. As you can see here, I'm flipping the colors on and off. They're proposing to, sorry, vacate this portion here and relocate it to the southern portion of the lot, so to allow the building to be built across all lots continuously. There's three discretionary applications before you tonight. One is being the design review with Stage 1 and 2. The second one being the variance in regards to FAR. And the third one's the parking exception. The first application I'm going to be speaking about first is the design review proposal. This is the site plan of the project. The building will occupy majority of the site and will be built across all lots, as you can see here in the shade of the gray area. It will also include a valet drop-off area, nine parking spaces at the ground level, an outdoor dining area, and a publicly accessible outdoor space along California. Parking to the subterranean garage will be from the relocated alley and the existing alley I'm showing here in the shaded area, which goes to the subterranean garage driveway in the back. As I mentioned before, it's a subterranean two-car garage. The first level, this is the slide here, it's going to be, it's going to have 63 of the 66 return public parking spaces. In the second subterranean garage level, it will have 82 hotel parking spaces. Just moving on to the design and the elevations, this slide here is the north and east elevations. Staff feels the design complements the urban context. It's designed with a blocking mass, which is typical of a typology for a hotel. It will be finished with quality materials such as Trespa cladding, spandrel glass, composite wood, anodized aluminum, and stucco. It will include yellow framing elements, as you see there on the east elevation, and also will have a towering element, which is along the corner of Maryland and California. Next slide here is the south and west elevations, which are the interior-facing elevations of the building. Overall, staff recommends approval of the design, which is one recommended condition to the City Council. The reasoning behind this condition is staff feels the landscaping and the amenities for the public-accessible open space along California Avenue could be functionally enhanced and visually enhanced to be more inviting to the public, and also have some better utility for the public so they're more inviting to use this area. The second application is a variance. The applicant's proposing a floor area ratio of 3.24. The zoning, I'm sorry, the downtown specific plan requires a maximum FAR of 3.0, and that's with the hotel incentive. Staff believes there are exceptional circumstances relating to the property. Just to give you a little brief background of the site, and this is an alley vacation map from 1956, and this is of the site and the block of the subject property. So outlined in yellow is the project site. Shaded in blue is the alley. It travels in a north and south direction. Portions of this alley was vacated, as depicted in the red shaded area. The purpose behind this back in 1956 was to accommodate in addition for the building we know today as the 24-Hour Fitness and Goodwill Store. So it accommodated addition to expand across the alley, and ultimately, that vacated portion was relocated to and bisecting across the subject site, as depicted here in the green area, traveling in east-west direction. Because of this bisecting alley in 1956, and that's referencing the slide I previously showed you before, staff believes there's practical difficulties involved. By least with the city, the applicant is required to relocate that bisecting alley elsewhere on the property, and it's to be deeded back to the city. This right here, the blue area, is depicting where the alley location will be taking place. Inherently, this will be perceived as site areas specifically for the hotel, and has the appearance of being accounted for as within the project's FAR calculation, when the hotel cannot construct above this alley, and it cannot be used part of the FAR calculation. The area of this alley is 2,950 square feet. So if the project were to include this area of the alley into the project site, the FAR would be 2.92, which is below the maximum of 3.0 required by the DSP. You know, because of this exceptional circumstance, staff believes there are practical difficulties involved with this project. Last, just in regards to make a key point in regards to the variance, it's just in regards to the purpose and intent of an FAR. The purpose and intent is to restrict the size and mass of buildings. The DSP allows, with the incentive, four hotels to be a maximum of six stories and have a height of 95 feet maximum. The project before you tonight will have six stories and will be at height of 80 feet, which is 15 feet below the maximum. Last application before you tonight is the parking exception. This project is required to have 140 hotel parking spaces, which the zoning code requires a one-to-one relationship, meaning one room requires one parking space. And also required by this project is 66 public parking spaces to return, and this is by the lease agreement with the city. So the applicant's proposing to provide 82 hotel parking spaces and return the 66 public parking spaces. As a result of the request, is a 58 hotel parking space exception. Just to briefly go over staff's analysis, hotels in the DSP are identified as a desired land use, as it will complement the downtown's thriving business district and also its entertainment, retail, and cultural destinations. The areas well-served on mass transit identified along north Brand Boulevard are the B-line bus numbers 1, 2, 11, and also Metro's bus number 92. There are studies out there, and I'm specifically citing the ITE, which is the International Traffic Engineers Parking Generation, which suggests that hotels can adequately be parked at a relationship of 0.7 to 0.8 spaces per room. The zoning code today requires, once again, a one parking space per one room. Because of the exceptional conditions on the site, the project will include within nine parking spaces on the ground level, and the remaining within the subterranean garage will provide 148 parking spaces, which 82 will be hotel parking spaces, and then 66 will be for public parking spaces. If the hotel were to provide code-required amount of parking spaces, ultimately, that would require a third subterranean garage, which would provide some difficulty with the financial viability for the project. Just to note, there's also other parking lots, public parking structures within the area. And I'm just identifying the exchange in the orange parking street garage, which were the immediate facilities. An addendum to the certified DSP EIR was prepared for this project. Overall, staff felt that this project would not result in any circumstances requiring a supplemental or subsequent EIR, and by tonight's council is to consider the addendum prior to approval of the project. And just to briefly go over, staff recommends approval of all three projects, a motion certifying the addendum to the EIR and the ordinance for the lease agreement for the project. This concludes my portion of the presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to the applicant, and I will be available for questions later on.
Very well. Thank you. And we have three cards from the applicant. That's Aram Alajajan, Jono Bagdanyan, and Raj Patel. Is one of you three going to be the main presenter?
Yes.
Is that you, Mr. Alajajan? How much time do you think you need?
I'm going to try to keep it short because...
I'm going to try to keep it short, because if there will be any questions, we have the entire staff here. 10 minutes would be fine. Thank you.
If you can keep it short, that's fine, too.
Okay.
I really want to get out and join my family.
I need to kind of use my slideshow as well.
It's a slideshow?
It's in there, okay. So just one of those?
Yes.
Is there a pointer, or there's no pointer? Okay, not a problem.
If you want to use a pointer, you'll have to use the mouse. That's up there?
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, as well as staff. First of all, let me say that thanks to the city staff, it's been a, as city manager Yasmin Beres has indicated, this has been a long road. We have spent a lot of time on this project, studied very well. You know, it is a good product that we're bringing to the city. This is a very unique boutique hotel. We have reviewed many projects along the way, and we arrived with the, with the boutique hotel, which is Indigo. So I'd like to continue my presentation by showing a couple of slides here. The very first slide, Dennis, which already covered this, it's, we will be doing the sweep of the places, which we do provide the alley towards the south side. That way, you know, the two parcels, the city-owned parcels, as well as the alleys, the city property, own property, will be combined as one. It's to your right, and it will provide over 25,333 square feet of a lot area, which is similar what is out there right now. It's exactly the same. It will be used as, as, as a area for the main construction of the hotel. Now, this slide indicates that if the alley portion, which we are, let me indicate that we are in a, in a deal, we are going to improve the alley, maintain the alley for all practical purposes, so that the entire alley is somewhat becoming a part of our project, as an improvement project. So that area, if you're including the own surface improvements, it goes up to close to 32,000 square feet, which, 31,000 square feet, which lands about, if you consider an FAR being at the surface land area, it lands about 2.6, if we divide, including the alley improvement area for the entire lot area. Now, the next slide down here shows the, how the hotel in proportion situated on the property. So the first-floor footprint basically will occupy north to south. It will allow a drop-off area on, off of the Maryland, and a, and a turning area along the alley side, which will, most of the cars will move back towards the ramp, and will ramp down to the lower parking lot. Now, on this slide also shows the distance between the, the building and, and the neighboring properties. There are only three buildings that are abiding to the alley as well, that the alley is serving those two, three buildings currently from the Brand Boulevard. Now, talking about the parking, first-level parking that we designated mainly being the public parking, it will have a public elevator that, you know, visitors will come through the public parking from the ramp going down, and the entire first-floor parking would be dedicated to a public parking. And also, we have three parking spaces on the first level. That three parking spaces on the first level, plus the 63 down here, will basically comply with the 66 replacement parking that is currently there. So we're replacing the existing parking back into the structure. So by doing that, we're also providing the exit stairs from both ends of the project, and we're providing a public elevators, which will basically work from this level, from level one to the street level. Now, the two elevators that you see in the middle, those are hotel elevators. They will work from the level two all the way to the hotel lobby, and will be operated by key card or by the valet people if it's needed to. Now, the lower-level parking, as you can view, mainly it's a, it's a hotel parking. We have a gate, if I go back, we have a gate on the, on the first floor that would basically allow, will be operated by the, by the key card, and will be allowed only hotel cars to go down. And at the lower level, as you can see, the public elevator doesn't reach to the lower level. Only two elevators, which are serving the hotel, will be reaching, the center elevators will be reaching down to the second floor of the parking. So that way, the people who park for the hotel, guests, could be reached down to their, to their cars, or if the valet needs to be operating this, any of those areas, we'll get to that in a minute, they will be basically using those elevators to get up to the lobby level, which is this. So the two elevators would stop at the lobby level. The check-in desk is at the left of the lobby level. Let me say that the, the distance between the property line, or from the street to the entry of the hotel, is about, close to the 40 feet. Is, is quite of a big distance, and it does allow double lane of the cars to turn in. We do have four parking spaces. As is not mentioned of any report, we also have three to four short-term parking space, parking spaces, which is immediately right next to the entry of the, of the hotel. So it will allow to drop off or pick up people from there, and to maneuver, either make a right turn towards the parking, or just leave the premises to the north or south. Now, on the, on the right side, in the corner, we situated the corner of Maryland and California, we situated the restaurant. So the restaurant itself opens up with a, with a non-doors, all the way to the, being in communication with the outdoors. So we do have an outdoor sitting. We have a large landscaping area. So the landscaping that you see from the property line to the sitting area, the minimum is eight feet on the California side, I'm sorry, on the North Maryland side. It goes to the 10 to 12 feet at the, at the parking. On the California side, it's about 10 feet of landscaping before you get to the outdoor terrace sitting. So the terrace sitting itself is about 10 foot wide. It does allow a lot of space for the people to have outdoor lunch or a dinner if they're coming to the hotel. We do have a full-service bar. We have restrooms located there. And, and mainly, the back of the house and the kitchen is located towards the back of the building, which would be occupying from the location from the alley side. So all the loading and loading has been done from the west side of the project at the first floor. Now, going to the, the color drawing, it also indicates the, the restaurant area, the reception area, the landscaping going through it. Now, we have also the passageway that we wanted to enhance between the project and it would be, if I, it would be west side between our building and 24-hour fitness, if you recall where the building is. So that area, we're thinking of enhancing completely with the green and the sitting area. So the, also opening up a pedestrian walkway all the way to the back of those businesses that currently exist. We don't know in the future what will happen, if they, if there will be any project down there, if they go all the way to the property line, they may lock their doors back there, but still, we're providing this access to the people. Now, the second floor, where the guest room starts, we will have our swimming pool and a typical guest room, starting from the second floor. We have a gym. We have a meeting rooms associated with our hotel. Basically, it's in conjunction, being used with the hotel. So to give you just an overview, pictures of the, what the pool area, pool deck will look like, as well as the, the recreation area, those are some of the pictures we selected. So the swimming pool will be basically sitting on a, on top of the deck, and we have cabanas, we have an outdoor juice bar area combined with that. And typical floors, basically with a north-south corridor and two elevators will be serving the, the entire floors and from floor three, I'm the second to sixth floor. Now, the rooftop on the, also, we're utilizing the rooftop. Not so many hotels are doing that in Glendale, but this is going to be one of the unique hotels that will utilize the rooftop as a space for the guests to congregate, to have coffee or, or an evening tea, cup of wine out there. So the, and it's also divided into areas there where they can relax. And the pictures that you see on the top, you know, you can capture the city view, or you can even watch the TV or a Super Bowl when you're up there with a little fire. Those are the elements, elevations, that I want to talk about a little bit. You know, we're using a very high-quality materials. As you can see, it's very rich in texture and colors, and it's very articulate. Mainly, the first floor is freed from the, from the massing, so it's pushed back in a way that allows the people to walk through the space and not being depressed by the walls are being closer to their walkways. So you're seeing the, basically, east and a north side elevation. This is south side and a west side elevation, looking towards the pool area. And we have the Hotel Indigo signs, standard signs on the project. This shows the landscaping and around the project, and on the rooftop, we will be landscaping as well.
Solajajan, you have a lot more left?
I, one more minute, I will be wrapping it up. So, so I want to show you some of the slides of the renderings, and then we come up with. This is the day view of the, of the intersection, which would be California and Maryland. And this is a night view. Some of the close-up shots that will give you the overall feeling of the how impressive that area is. And we put some slides from the existing Indigo Hotel, so it will give you the feeling of the, what the boutique hotel interiors are, and the, and the quality of the rooms and the furniture and the design that will go with our project, as well as with the fitness center down there. This will be my last slide, and if you have any questions for me, I would be happy to answer you. We also have Mr. Jono Bagdanyan, who is our traffic consultant, if he wants to make a short presentation. We have in the team, my partner is here, Mr. Sakumarkusi, Mr. Chris Dobbins from Hotel Indigo, representing Hotel Indigo IHG Group is here, as well as Rhonda Garib is here. It's from, she's from the management, Intermountain. She can talk about, if you have any questions about the employment and how the hotel is managed, she's here to answer that. Mr. Raj Patel is here, from R3, is the developer of the project. Our legal team is here with Mr. Eric Alton.
Thank you, Mr. Alajajan.
Thank you.
Do my colleagues have questions for the architect?
I have, I have one question.
Please.
On page A8.3, that's the ground-level design detail, where you have, in the design of the building, the actual structure and surrounding, and the open space, you have this alley. Then up above there, you have another space. Is this just an enlargement of the space that's by the, close to the, right there?
Oh, no, this one.
No, that one.
This one.
Yes. The space above, the drawing above is the same as?
Oh, yes. It's an enlargement of that space, the public space that we're proposing to enhance.
And how, how wide is that space?
That's a minimum of 10 feet. In, in some areas, where we have a public elevator is coming up at the corner, we thought that is the best location to bring up the public elevator in the staircase, because people who are going to 24-hour fitness or to, to the brand, that probably would be the best location for the public elevator. In front of the public elevator, that, that space is about 20 feet, 20, 21 feet minimum depth by 40 feet.
And you're using that space as part of your open space?
Yes.
But it's not 10, it's not 20 by 20?
Well, the 20 by 20 area is in front of the elevator space.
Well, but the whole open space, according to code, is supposed to be 20 by 20, according to the code.
We, I believe we have more than that. Also, we have open space in the rooftop, which is also accessible by, by public, and it's a lot larger than that.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know, the size of that space.
Mr. Bagdanyan, you have, do you want to speak, or?
I have a very representative, just on the parking requirement.
Three minutes?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, just to complement staff presentation on the parking requirement, the parking for the hotel, if it's a one-to-one ratio, is 140 spaces. As stated in the staff report, based on Institute of Transportation Engineers parking ratios for hotels or urban land institute, these types of hotels with 140 to 170 rooms, currently the ratios are in the .8 to .7 rooms per, per, spaces per room. So basically, with a .8, the hotel can provide 112 spaces or 98 spaces with a .7. Let's assume it's 112. 82 parking spaces are being provided, as in the lower level, the second level. So if you just look at here, three spaces, in other words, the public spaces will be replaced, the 66, three is on the street level, six will be for the hotel on the street level. And then first level would be 63 spaces, that would be the public parking component, and 76 would be the hotel parking, with a total of 148. What we did is, we also looked at, last time, we looked at what would be the deficiency? If we take the 140, 112 as the parking ratio, we will, and subtract that from the 140, we have 82 parking spaces that was being provided. We have short 30 spaces, based on 112 parking space requirement for the hotel component. If we use the .7, we will need 16 parking spaces. Again, it's 82 minus the 98 that's being provided. So we're short between 16 to 30 parking spaces. What we are, are recommending, that we have valet parking operation. At the last meeting, we had shown a valet plan that we could valet almost 50 parking spaces within that first level and the second, second level of the parking. We've reduced that to 20, because I know council was concerned about the maneuverability of vehicles within that parking level. So assuming that we will provide 20 with valet services, parking in the eyes, I have a diagram, I won't go into the details, if you want me, I can show it to you. Under this scenario, with a .8, we will be short 10 parking spaces, and if we use a .7 ratio, we'll have a surplus of four spaces. Assume there isn't, it will be an even number of spaces. And considering that in the area of the hotel, this is where the hotel is going to be, you have lot number two with 66 spaces, lot number four with 42 spaces, the exchange parking structure, which was also identified in the staff report. Any of these locations, we can valet park those additional 10 spaces, or even more. We can use those for valet parking. Well, we also did, the developer team talked to Modern Parking, which is the current operator of the city's parking structure. We felt that it would be better if the existing operator, who is operating the parking structure in the city, they have a presence, local presence, they will also operate the hotel parking, and they can also do the valet operation. I have a letter that I will pass on for council, that outlines Modern Parking's availability, and they are willing to do the valet operation, as well as operate the hotel parking. Upon approval of this project, they will enter into an agreement, wait the developer to do so. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bagdanyan. I think Modern Parking is the parking company that has the city contract, right?
That's correct.
Yes, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bagdanyan?
Actually, Mr. Alajajan?
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead. John, if I may.
I guess we discussed about the parking, I just, that from one to one, we came to .8 per room, right?
That's, yes, one option.
I didn't see anywhere that that has been mentioned, except you're saying it. I thought there will be an issue of, for, let's say, for, we discussed this in one of the meetings, that will be a contract with a parking operator, or we will have parking spaces for some period of time. That would be, I mean, will be, or you guys will provide approximately 30 or 32 additional parking outside of it, because we agreed to eliminate the third parking level. And we said, you guys are going to go and rent outside, there will be a real contract that will provide additional 30 or 32 parking stalls, right? I don't see that. I mean, just now, we, we came to the point that we have two level of parking. One is, we are replacing uh, we are replacing the parking which city has, and the other one is for the hotel.
Certainly, the development team is still looking to, um, others, parking structures. One is the, uh, parking structure on Lexington, which is just north of the parking. It's a private parking structure that can be leased for that purpose, that's in the process. Also, keep in mind that the exchange parking structure with 650 spaces sitting empty at night from 10:00 PM to about 7:00 or 8:00 AM, this is the time where the hotel parking demand is the highest. So you have a parking structure that you can also generate revenue from it, and you have parking lots that are available right surrounding the hotel, and you can easily use that. As I said, in most of the downtown settings with 140, 170-room hotel, uh, hotel rooms, most of the cities are looking into taking advantage of the existing parking facilities. That doesn't mean that the development team will not seek into securing additional parking, but we looked at it and say, you have a structure with 650 spaces, currently same type of arrangements are being with valet companies that are doing banquet facility parking at the marketplace garage. If we look at that, the deficiency of 20 or 30 parking spaces, we can easily park that in the parking structure at the exchange, number one. Number two, the cert, the public parking component of this project, which is 66 spaces, at 10:00 PM, every parking lot in the city, their time restrictions are done, so you start at 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Now you have a parking lot underneath the hotel, has 60 parking spaces available, and from a practical standpoint, we want to take 20, 30 cars that would, could be parked there and move them into an outside parking facility. So we're trying to come up with a practical solution, that you have a parking lot that is going to be used for the good hotel guests primarily, you can valet parking at least 20 more spaces. Then whatever the balance is, if there's an overflow, you can park it in that surface lot for the public parking after 10:00 PM, you don't have to move the valets anywhere else. Then, in case you have to, then you can move it to the exchange parking structure, which is sitting empty with more than 600 spaces. In the morning, when the guests need their cars, they will move the cars into the hotel using the same operator. That's just a very practical way of what hotel operators do these days, so that you can maximize it without taking parking away from anybody else.
Well, I have to look into it a little bit later, but I'm not satisfied. Let's put it that way.
And, and I agree with, uh, with the council member. Plus, if we're trying to make this an 18-hour city, then we're going to need that parking in the structure. But, and, and if you would, if, you know, the agreement was, as I understood it, with the four-to-one vote, was that you were going to acquire off-site parking. Then all of a sudden, we, it comes back and that's off the table and you want a variance. So if you provided that parking, we would not need a variance and everything would be copacetic.
Not speaking for the developer, but that is still, that is still, uh, an, an option that that would be, if that's a requirement, that would have to be done, that's my understanding. I was trying to portray, what is a practical way of managing a parking when you have a hotel?
If I can, if I can say something. So that is a requirement that this council has made clear to, um, those representing the project. There will have to be the 30, somehow, there, you have to figure out how you're going to park 30 spots, 30, um, automobiles, and, um, I think that's pretty much a condition for this project. But in terms of even, even with you fulfilling that condition, which you will have to, the variance has to be given, isn't that correct, Madam City Manager?
Parking exception of?
Parking exception, yeah.
Either way.
Still, still getting to point eight, so you do have a parking exception. Uh, Mr. Patel, do you want to add something?
Yeah, if I may answer about the parking, uh, we're still working on an, uh, agreement with the, uh, local, um, uh, people who have the parking. But it's tough to go and represent, uh, this site when we don't even have a lease. You know, that's the first thing they ask is, is the hotel approved? Do you have the lease? We say no. So they said, why don't you come back, you know, when you get an approval or you, or you, or you're in the process of getting the lease? We don't have approval yet. And we knew how important the parking was last time, you wanted a professional valet company to come in and park the cars at the bottom, and I believe that's what we've gotten with the letter, is the professional company.
Uh, I totally agree with you. You don't have anything in your hand, no contract, nothing, so you can't go and ask for parking space.
We can ask, but people don't take you more seriously.
They don't pay attention.
Yeah, they don't pay attention.
Okay. But what my point is, that we are not, on whatever I saw here, the presentation, I didn't see the, we are entertaining the idea. We are not saying, where is the contract?
Yeah.
For those parking spaces?
We are entertaining the idea of finding 30 parking spaces near the hotel, that you can park the car. So we have been, uh, talking to various parties, but, uh, this takes time and it's, it's a long-term commitment, so it, it takes longer than, you know, the one month or two months that we were here, you know, before people will, you know, sign a long-term contract with you.
Right. But that's, I say, when you go and you want to sign a contract. But I don't see the idea here in this presentation, that you guys gonna go at a later time.
I think it's in the lease, it's in the lease.
Is it, is it in the lease, Mr. City Attorney?
Can you point that out to us?
Sorry? Is the, the requirement for 30 off-site parking spaces for the, for the operator to find and secure 30 off-site parking spaces, is that in the lease?
It's not in the lease currently. I think what?
Can we add in the lease?
What I would suggest is after we've, we've had the chance to have all the public comment and the council can deliberate and provide direction on what, what conditions you want.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I'm sorry. But that's the idea, that you would go and?
Yes.
Lease a space or spaces. I don't see it in any presentation. That's what I'm saying. I'm not expecting you at this time, you bring me a contract, say, okay.
The copy of the lease I have, that it's in there, it's about 80 pages and it's somewhere in there, that, uh, to find the off-site parking, uh, to my recollection.
Okay. The short answer is, you can make that a condition of, of an approval, Mr. Mayor.
Condition of approval, yes. We can make that condition of approval. I want to give a chance to, uh, the other speakers to have their word as well, and we have a lot of cards. So, um, I imagine there's no one person that represents everyone, because I imagine there's multiple groups. So I'm going to take each person one by one and give everyone two minutes' time. So why don't we get started? Victoria Docholian, followed by Marty Tice, I think.
Uh, hello again. First of all, congratulations, Mayor Sinonian, and we look forward to working with you this coming year. I have a letter from the Assemblymember regarding the Indigo Hotel. It reads, this was written before your appointment, Mayor Sinonian. It reads, Dear Honorable Mayor Garbattian and City Councilmembers, as the Assemblymember representing the City of Glendale, I am writing to encourage you to consider the impact of the Hotel Indigo project on the community, and work to ensure that any project approved by this, by the council remains consistent with the values of our great city, particularly when it involves publicly owned land. As our city has grown, we've worked to promote an environment that provides cultural resources, community engagement, sustainable, quality jobs, and a positive econ, economic impact. When considering any project on publicly owned land, including the development of a hotel, the public's expectation is that you will operate as good stewards of public resources. To that end, a hotel built on publicly owned land should be an asset to the neighborhood and the workers it will employ by providing good jobs with benefits and include hiring requirements for Glendale residents and historically underrepresented groups in the hospitality industry. I greatly appreciate the consideration the council has given this project and every project in our city, as we've grown to become a world-class leader in community design. We've built neighborhoods and a vibrant downtown core that is gathering spot for Glendale residents of all ages and a destination for tourism and industry. As you deliberate the merits of this project and the use of public resources, I hope that you will work to ensure that the project makes a positive impact on our city, our residents, and the workforce that the hotel will rely upon. Sincerely, Laura Freeman.
Thanks. Thank you, Victoria.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And Victoria, please extend our appreciation for the count, for the Assemblywoman for, again, being so interested in the affairs of the City of Glendale.
And I believe she was part of this process for some time.
I believe she was. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Tice, followed by Violet Coker. Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Um, no, that's okay.
Sorry about that.
It's okay, it's German. Anyway, my name's Marty Tice, and I'm a, uh, fair housing advocate for the City of Glendale. I've been living here for many years, and, uh, I'm opposed to the hotel, uh, being built, because it is being built on public property, and this land could be used for affordable housing, or even a park, or a free public space. And, uh, the, uh, what is it, just down the street, what is the, um, Hyatt, uh, Hyatt Place is being built? So there's plenty of places for people to stay here. So, uh, anyway, those are my thoughts, and I oppose the, uh, the building of the hotel. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Violet Coker, followed by, I think it's Irma Rincon. I hope that's right.
Hi, good evening. My name is Violet Coker, Public Affairs Representative for the Carpenters Contractors Cooperation Committee, or the Quad C. Uh, we are a labor management organization, and for, for the past 30 years, we've helped local, state, and federal agencies and the community ensure contractors do not violate labor laws. We monitor subcontractors for worker rights violations, including wage theft and payroll tax fraud. We are concerned, uh, about the frequency at which we have seen law-breaking subcontractors on Glendale projects specifically. Under recent state legislation, developers can be held accountable for such cases, and our organization has the ability to bring forth action in court to enforce these laws. So we will be monitoring the progress of Hotel Indigo closely, and also the developer's choice of subcontractors. We'd be extremely dismayed to see further use of law-breaking subcontractors on projects in Glendale. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You're probably referring to Fullerton Pacific?
In Calcreet.
In Calcreet. So there, two names that I hope the developer stays away from, because otherwise there'll be problems. Thank you. Irma Rincon, followed by Araceli Parias. I hope I got that right.
Hi, good evening, council, City Councilmembers, congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Irma Rincon. I work, um, and live at Hilton, I mean, in Pasadena for eight years. I'm here tonight to oppose the Hotel Indigo project, because I do not believe it will be good project for this city. A hotel on public land should provide good jobs with benefits to local Glendale residents. The future jobs at this hotel should allow workers to, uh, to afford basic necessities and drive in our community. There is becoming more expensive to live. I should not create poverty jobs in, encourage surrounding cities that look at Glendale as an example to the same, to do the same. My concern is that whatever happens in Glendale affects my living and working conditions in Pasadena. And we want to better, or, sorry, and we want to better our standards, not lower them. Thank you, and again, uh, my proposal here is to oppose the Hotel Indigo.
Okay, thank you. Araceli Parias, followed by Christina Navas.
Buenas tardes, señores miembros. Señores miembros del Consejo de Glendale.
Councilmembers.
Y congratulaciones al nuevo Consejo.
Congratulations.
Mi nombre es Araceli Parias.
My name is Araceli Parias.
Tengo 25 años trabajando en el Hotel Hilton.
I've been working for 25 years at the Hilton in Glendale.
Y ha cambiado varias veces de nombre el hotel, pero me ha proporcionado.
The name has changed, but?
Me ha proporcionado beneficios.
But it has given me benefits?
Buenos para mi futuro de mis hijos.
For the future of my children.
Mis dos hijos ya se me graduaron.
My two, um, children have already graduated.
Uno es biólogo marino.
One is a biologist.
Y another one is in kinesiology. Pero ahorita no me alcanza el dinero para poderle.
But right now, I'm still, um, not able to afford.
Para que termine su maestría aquí en Estados Unidos.
To help him, um, pursue his master's degree here in the U.S.
Ahorita él está estudiando en Inglaterra.
He's currently, um, studying in England.
Para poder sacar su, su master.
To be able to, um, get his master's degree.
Si yo no tuviera estos beneficios.
If I was not able to have these benefits?
Que tengo ahorita.
That I, that I currently have.
Yo estaría muy endeudada y no podría ayudar el futuro de nuestra nación.
I would be, um, immensely in debt, and I wouldn't be able to provide back to my country.
Y yo quiero que todos los niños de este mundo, especialmente de la ciudad de Glendale.
I want all children in the world, but specifically the children in Glendale.
Que tengan todas las oportunidades, no importa ni raza.
To have all the opportunities that they have, no matter what race they are.
No importa razas, colores, sino el conocimiento para la humanidad entera.
Skin color, um, I just want them to have, um, the best.
Yo me siento muy feliz trabajando en mi hotel.
I feel extremely happy of working at the, uh, Hilton.
Y me siento muy feliz con esta comunidad que me ha dado todo.
And I feel extremely happy with this community that has given me everything.
Y quiero que el futuro sea parejo para toda la humanidad.
And I want the future to be, um, equal for everyone else.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Christina Navas, followed by Isabel Valmea.
Good evening, City Councilmembers, my name is Christina. I've been working at the Glendale Hilton for 18 years now, and I live in Glendale. Hopefully, I've been, probably I've been served one of you guys already in there with my service, excellent service at my hotel, and I want to continue for the rest, and hopefully I would retire in that hotel. And I have lived work here for 25 years. I'm here tonight in opposition to the Hotel Indigo project, because I believe valuable public land should be used for the benefit of the community. We need affordable housing for workers to be able to live in the city since rent is becoming so expensive. We need park spaces so our children can have place to play near the downtown area. If there's a hotel on this land, it should be provide good jobs with benefits to local Glendale residents. The future jobs at this hotel should allow workers to afford basic necessities and drive in our community. Where is the becoming more expensive to live? It should be not create poverty jobs and encourage surrounding cities that look at Glendale as an example to do the same. And please, I'm happy to be serving you until I retire at the Glendale Hilton. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Isabel Valmea, followed by Danielle Wilson.
I am here once again to ask for the same thing like my coworkers say and explain to the other people that they are always watching to these projects. And I'm very disappointed when you guys spend such a, such a long time trying to see something that doesn't have future, because these developer, they come from other states with money who knows from where, and try to impose us to put a hotel in a place that it doesn't make any sense. We are a very, um, city earthquake that it can come out anytime, and then that, for me itself, I'm not from any other university, but I, as a regular person that live in this city, I can't figure it out that more buildings and buildings, and we don't have a really, um, a structure as a city. We don't pay attention on that. We are just paying attention, we bring more business and people in here, we don't make enough money to go and shop in those store, we don't make enough money to live a decent life in a decent place like, uh, the apartment buildings, because we don't pay attention on people. We just pay attention on how much money do you want to make in this city, and keep, keep, keep growing, and so high, so high that you, you have no idea how bad it's gonna be later. Because if we don't, we are not happy here in the way that when we're going to work and they don't respect our rights, what do you expect for the other, uh, generation? Please, pay attention on those simple things that people is asking for, people that we choose you to be sitting over there. We work, we support you, and we want now your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valmea. Danielle Wilson, followed by Eddie, it's either Kendon or Rendon.
Congratulations, Mayor Sinonian, and good evening, City Councilmembers and staff. My name's Danielle Wilson.
My name's Danielle Wilson and I am here on behalf of Unite Here Local Eleven, the Hotel Workers Union. We represent over two-hundred-and-fifty Glendale residents, including the workers of the Glendale Hilton behind me and thirty thousand hospitality workers across the region. On behalf of our membership, as this is the first time we're really seeing the project in its entirety, or almost its entirety, we cannot support the project in its current form. Staff is recommending several conditions of approval that are significant and should be addressed prior to the issuance of discretionary entitlements and a very generous long-term ground lease with the city. First, regarding Stage One and Two Design Review. The developer is requesting the vacation and re-establishment of an alley easement which the staff report indicates will be considered at a later date. This is a significant decision that should be decided on prior to design review approval so that the council can approve or deny a project in its entirety. This seems like an example of project piecemealing, which is explicitly prohibited under CEQA. Staff is also recommending that the landscape and amenities be quote-unquote "functionally enhanced" and redesigned to be visually open and accessible to the public as a condition of approval for design review. I would think that this council would want to review this design again in its entirety before issuing a discretionary approval. And finally, the applicant is proposing a hotel restaurant at the ground floor. If the council does decide to approve both stages of design review, they should add as a condition of approval the prohibition of an administrative use permit for alcohol as to prevent further project piecemealing. In regards to the parking exception, a couple weeks ago, the council began making changes to the incentives and bonuses chapter of the DSP, including the parking requirements for hotels. If it is indeed the case that the council wants to amend the code to require, you know, point seven or point eight spaces per room based on the, the study cited in the staff report, it does not make sense to use that in the analysis of the parking exception requirements for the project before you tonight until those changes are codified. And even if the council decides to base their decision tonight on that study, as you know, the developer is still short sixteen to thirty spaces than the code requires. We don't even believe this project qualifies for a parking exception to begin with due to the fact that it is located entirely in the DSP, which is, uh, which prohibits a parking exception in the code. And even if it did, it does not meet the required findings, which are outlined in my letter. You should deny this request entirely or delay it until the parking requirements in the DSP are sufficiently codified. The structure of the lease agreement differs significantly from last time before it came before council and the public had an opportunity to comment, and it's far too generous for what the city is getting in return. I understand from the staff report that the developer decided to forego formal economic development subsidy to avoid paying prevailing wages, but there is still a significant amount of subsidy in the way the lease is currently structured. In this agreement, the developer is going to get two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars a year in rent credit for the first ten years of operation to account for their construction of the public parking component, which seems unreasonably justified by the fact that the developer is merely replacing the spots that are already there. Can I get an extension?
How much more do you have?
I have one paragraph.
Go for it, Danielle.
Thank you. Finally, we think the council should carefully consider whether or not to proceed with this developer because it is not clear that the council has been adequately informed about the kinds of properties that the developer owns and manages. R3 currently manages several hotels and motels that do not seem to be of the same quality as a Hotel Indigo, nor are they located in prime real estate markets for hospitality. Their portfolio includes several budget motels such as the Bronco Motor Inn and Lark Motel in Compton, the Saharan Motor Hotel in Hollywood, the El Grande Motel in Southgate, the Travel Plaza Inn in Long Beach, and the Travel Lodge Inn in Suites in Gardena. This council should consider this fact as you proceed with a long anticipated hotel project. Thanks.
Thank you. Eddie, either Rendon or Kendon. Let's, let's keep this moving forward. Followed by Karen Samsky.
Good evening, council, and congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Rendon and I represent Team Shus Local 986, which has over eighteen thousand members in three state, in its three-state jurisdiction. Hundreds of these members, however, reside and work in the city of Glendale. They're employed in the ready-mix industry, which is a critical part of the building and construction trades. We strongly oppose the Indigo Hotel project in its current proposed format. Our members and the residents of Glendale deserve to live and work in a city that generates good union jobs and an opportunity to rise into the middle class, especially if this development is on public land. We stand with our Unite Here brothers and sisters to ask for prevailing wage and a better project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Can we, just, just so that this is a smoother process, can we just keep the applause for the end, maybe? Karen Samsky followed by Natalie Hoag.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. When I was a little girl, my father worked two full-time jobs. He was this shadowy figure in the distance that I didn't know at all until he got a union job. It changed our lives forever. I also am a fair housing advocate who has lived in Glendale for seventeen years. You said earlier that the people of Glendale were your first priority and your stewards of the public property. To allow any concern, a hotel come in and not pay a prevailing union wage is a signal to every employer in this area that they don't have to do the same. The real tenants in this city, two-thirds of the citizens in this city are renters and they already don't have enough affordable housing. They don't have enough green spaces. You would give a sweetheart deal to this, but yet so far you've turned a blind eye to rent control, rent stabilization, and anything that would make it more affordable for people who want to stay here and spend their money here, to stay here. So I urge you to reject this proposal as it stands now.
Okay, thank you. Come on, please, please. Natalie Hoag followed by Ally Jones.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I grew up going to schools in Glendale. I worked at a dental practice in high school after school. Went to dental school in nineteen eighty-seven. I started, I bought a dental practice here in Glendale and I've been in, in private practice as a dent, a general dentist in Glendale for more than thirty years. I've watched the changes grow and the city grow and the congestion. Right now, for the last ten years, I've been at the building at Two Thirty North Maryland, which is directly across the street from the proposed project, which I strongly oppose. Their project mentioned in no way how the parking would be affected because of all the businesses in the Two Thirty North Maryland, um, office suite. That is where all of my patients park. That is the only place there is any handicap parking, of which I have many patients. Because I've been treating patients for more than thirty years, I see over a hundred patients a week. I take care of over a thousand families. We have many appointments. All of those people drive. They have to have someplace to park. I have six full-time staff. I pay good wages. They have families that they also support. Several of them came with me this evening because they're very interested and given up their time to be here tonight to support that. I don't, I, I see a lot, four generations of patients that have been coming and count on my being there for their care and a place to park. And I think if this project were here, that, um, it would severely affect my business, their care, their ability to seek care, and that they would, they would want to go other places. And I think it would be disastrous for my business personally and for the other businesses in the building in which I am a tenant. Thank you.
I'm sorry, are you currently, your, your, your patients and your employees, are they currently parking in that parking lot?
The building that I'm in, I guess the requirements are you have to have so many parking spaces per square footage. So I have a fifteen-hundred-square-foot suite. I have five spaces for my, um, staff. On days when we have more staff than that, my staff also uses the parking directly across the street.
Okay, but you realize they're gonna replace that parking, right?
Right, but people that go to boutique hotels don't ride buses. So if they're saying that the bus is gonna be the transit and they only have to replace half, my patients aren't gonna be parking underground there. People from Twenty-four Hour Fitness, they're not, it, it's not an equal trade. They're, they're asking for fewer spaces than what they need and those fewer spaces will be taken by hotel guests if there's no place else to park.
Okay, thank you. Ally Jones followed by Dan Hoag. I guess that's Ali.
Yes, I got him. Hi, Ally Jones. Again, I'm here to oppose the construction of the Indigo Hotel. Okay, number one, the variance case, uh, number P-VAR eight, one-eight-zero-three-one-nine-seven. It is my understanding that the DSP allows for a floor area ratio of two-point-five. And we extended them a courtesy along three-point-oh. And now they need to go even further to three-point-two-six? Too many incentives, too many entitlements. What is the benefit that we actually receive? Not much. Public space on the rooftop? Who goes to the rooftop of a hotel that you can't get into and get to the rooftop? This is not realistic. I'm looking at the numbers, the facts, and the figures. I respect these guys trying to make money at the public's expense. Doesn't do Glendale any good, period. Let's look at the parking exception, uh, one-eight-zero-three-one-nine-eight. Unacceptable. They're gonna provide fifty-eight percent of the requested amount of parking? Eighty-two out of a hundred and forty spaces? Who's gonna cover the, the sixty-six employees that are gonna have parking? Where are those guys gonna park? We're talking about rooms. We're, we're missing the point. So for the people here, for the people in the city of Glendale, for the parking, for the businesses, it's not advantageous for everybody. And the money that we're giving these guys, they're taking away sixty-six spaces that are already there, replacing them, that we can't have access to because realistically, as she mentioned, the people, the hotel guests are gonna park in those public parking spaces. Listen, guys, I strongly oppose this. I ask respectfully. I know you've been working on it since two thousand and fifteen, Ms. Beers, but the, at the end of the day, if they've been working on this since two thousand and fifteen, they should be able to put, present a better proposal according to the guidelines and regulations. They have a team of architects for that. No excuses. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dan Roach followed by, followed by Nayira Sobatian, please. You're only extending this hearing. There's no clapping. I mean, we don't, we don't clap at the hearings.
Good evening, Your Honor.
Good evening.
Members of the council. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Dr. Hoag in capacity as her husband and her lawyer to ask the, the council to slow down this process specifically. It would appear from my, uh, we've only been aware of this for a very short period of time, but it appears that essentially this is proceeding by way of largely a negative CEQA declaration, that the environmental impact is essentially negative. The law is very clear, as defined by CEQA, that environment is a change in any physical condition. We're talking about a parking lot that is part of your downtown district transitional plan. This is not some idle piece of property. This is part of your transitional, uh, property. And another property that is included in that is the Two Thirty North Maryland Building. When you take away this parking, even if you took it away for a year, you have effectively put out of business everyone directly across the street that was relying on that parking since that building was built nearly forty years ago. The, in order to satisfy the CEQA requirements, I believe you really need a full EIR so that you can have a public hearing so that these issues can be addressed. We heard earlier tonight that, for example, that we really don't need a one-to-one ratio, that a lesser ratio would apply. Well, where does that statistic come from? I heard that it was from an invi, uh, an international study. Well, as, as my wife pointed out, people going to boutique hotels do not take the bus here in California. If you look at that parking lot on any given day, you will see that it is essentially full from morning till evening, uh, and yet there is no hotel there. It is being fully utilized all day long, every day, certainly every workday, uh, with, without the additional load of that hotel. The next thing I'd like you to do is to slow down and really look at the variance requirements, your specific findings that have to be required. Is this study of one-to-one or point seven, is that really valid for the place that we live? You need specific findings and you need evidence for that and that's really where, the kind of thing that would get fleshed out in a full environmental impact report with a opportunity to have a hearing. The other reason to slow this down is, is I heard the, almost the first words out of, uh, I think Ms. Beer's mouth was she, when she was presenting this, is this has been a project that has been in the works behind the scenes for over three years. This shouldn't be behind the scenes. This should be out in the full light of the public so that everybody that has a stake in the public resources, including this parking lot, can participate in this as opposed to getting last-minute warning. So I would ask that you make provision for a, a full CEQA EIR study and that you have express findings concerning the parking.
Thank you. Nayira Sobatian followed by Leonard Larson. Jensen, Jensen it is.
Good evening, dear council members. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. I reside two blocks from the proposed Indigo Hotel. I also sit on the board of our thirty-unit H.O.A. and represent the opinion of the overwhelming majority of ninety-plus people. We oppose the location of Hotel Indigo on the public land, let alone the extra entitlements the developer seeks on top of the FAR and height incentives it seems to have appropriated. The maximum FAR for the project zone is two-point-five. The developer has not shown any community or public benefit and yet has already added a zero-point-five incentive to FAR. And now the developer seeks a variance to add an additional zero-point-twenty-six without indicating any specific findings of exceptional circumstances. Just because the alley was, did it in nineteen fifty-six, that does not necessarily indicate an exceptional circumstance or a hardship. Moreover, in the DSP where you have approved a moratorium two weeks ago and where you have already acknowledged the problem of exceeding density fraught with numerous adverse environmental impacts caused partly by the FAR incentives, there is actually specific findings against such an FAR increase. It will be materially detrimental to the public welfare. Lastly, the granting of the point-twenty-six extra FAR on top of the zero-point-five maximum incentive FAR will be contrary to the objectives of the ordinance with regards to the transitional district of the DSP, which by definition should move away from the higher density. This building, as you can see, is very, very tall and actually taller from both the, uh, the buildings on brand and also the buildings, um, uh, east of it. Parking exception and reduction of fifty-eight parking spaces is inappropriate because it will allow the double dipping of incentives. They're already getting the FAR and height incentives and now they seek parking incentive and it is disallowed by the Glendale Municipal Code. Also, this, just remember that this is not just a hotel, it is also a restaurant, so the restaurant people will need their parking. Also, the EIR mentions sixty-nine employees for the hotel who will also need parking. And, um, and again, just pointing out that different parking locations one or two or three blocks away is not gonna, is not gonna make it. It's not gonna cut it. It's obvious that they're gonna be using the sixty-six parking spaces for the public and it is unacceptable. As for open spaces, Paula Devine mentioned, um, the ten-feet-wide space on the corner and also away from the main street is not enough and it is not a meaningful public open space. So please vote against the hotel in general and also against the FAR increase and parking exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Jensen followed by Chris Dobbins.
Hello, my name is Leonard Jensen. The council may know my father, Les Jensen, who died a number of years ago, but we've been real estate developers in Glendale since nineteen sixty-nine. One of the, one of the first rules that my dad taught me about developing any project is how many cars can you park that will limit the size of your project? Whether it's apartment buildings where you already have one and a half spaces for a one-bedroom, uh, one-three-quarter for a two-bedroom, two spaces for a three-bedroom, where you already have parking requirements of three spaces per thousand square feet of office space, five spaces per, per thousand square feet of medical space. Every project needs to stand on its own with regard to parking. The lot that's there supports not just my building, because I own the Two Thirty Maryland project. My father and I developed it in nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-one. We also developed quite a number of apartment buildings, including the Glendale Corporate Center, four-twenty-five Colorado. We learned, when we built the Two Thirty Maryland Building, the parking requirement was two and a half spaces per thousand square feet. We built the building at three spaces per thousand square feet because that's the minimum that the market demands. The market will take up everything that is available. If you do, if you approve a project that cannot support itself, is going to steal parking from other buildings in the neighborhood, you're shooting that project in its own foot. Because it can't support itself, it cannot generate a, uh, a low vacancy... Because it can't support itself, it cannot generate a low vacancy factor if they don't have the parking. So far, the parking doesn't support the rooms, it doesn't support the employees for the parking, it doesn't support the guests for its own restaurant. This project doesn't stand on its own the way it's designed. Now, the developers, in the wisdom of the beginning, did their soils report to support the concept of going three layers down in the parking. The answer is obvious, they planned for it at the beginning. They're trying to shortcut this project, and that's, it's not going to do the project service on its own merits.
Thank you, sir. The last speaker is Chris Dobbins. I believe he represents the Intercontinental Hotel Group.
Good evening. I guess I'm the only one here supporting this project, huh? No, I just, you know, I know Glendale now for 15 years, and Hotel Indigo is a perfect project for this market. Hotel Indigo, as the one is in downtown Los Angeles that maybe some of you have seen, it's about a neighborhood story, it's about creating jobs, good jobs for people, it's about creating more economic taxes for the city to do more things for the city. The neighborhood story is an important part of Hotel Indigo because all of them are different. There's not a brand standard in every single hotel. That is taking what the, I guess, Historic Theater block away from this site and weaving that into the hotel and the fiber. As to parking, you know, a lot of times, people, really people that are coming to the Hotel Indigo are taking Uber. To be honest, we've taken a lot of Ubers, taken a lot of Lifts. I'm just telling you, as boutique travelers, and it's evolving, more and more cities are taking the parking requirement to lessen the traffic burden to where the hotel is. I mean, so, you know, we're good with .8, but I understand whatever the contract, whatever the city requires for the parking is what they require in the lease. And as to R3, you know, he's worked with our company for many, many years, very solid developer, does what he says, and, you know, we're proud to be affiliated with him and this project, and we're proud to be in the city here, and so I'm here to answer any questions you might have as well about the brand.
Are you being excused for good?
No, no, no.
Sorry about that. Do we have any questions for Mr. Dobbins?
Yeah, just briefly. Welcome to Glendale.
Yeah.
So will you be involved, will your company be involved in the actual management, or was there another management company underneath?
There is a management company that will not be us. We will be, you know, supervising the brand and the standards that are being met by the management company. So we'll interface from start to finish with the developer, R3, as well as the management company, which we have a lot of experience with as well, and they have a phenomenal track record.
So what I'm hearing, both today and earlier, is this call for community benefits. And obviously, with the presence of the Unite Here, which is the Hotel Worker Union, I think it's their intention that when the hotel begins operations, that they be, I think their first wish is that they be permitted to organize in the hotel. Their second wish would be that workers that are working there regardless of affiliation are given good-paying jobs, and you heard from a couple Hilton workers that said, you know, this really was great for my family. I mean, what's your sort of position on that? Are you opposed to engaging them? And what's your position on benefits?
That position is with the developer and the management company.
So that would be down the line a bit?
But as far as the brand, any requirements or questions you have about the brand or restaurant, rooftop bar, any of that stuff?
I mean, I'll be honest, I like the brand. I think you have a high quality and a good reputation. But what we're hearing, aside from some of the parking issues which we'll deal with and the density issues which we'll deal with, I think the loudest voice out here is the call for the community benefits. And I think that means, you know, as I stated. So, but that's all the questions I have.
Okay, and I'll defer to them and let them answer that.
Rajan, you have questions?
Yes. Do you guys have any control or recommendation regarding parking wages to the management?
Yeah, we do, we do. In this case, you know, our recommendation would be .8 to 1 parking, and reciprocal parking agreements with adjacent parking and valet is very common in boutique urban situations because parking, you know, there's substantial cost to going down a third level and increasing the parking. But as long as there is adjacent parking that's available, that you can valet into, that was our requirement before we approved the Hotel Glendale in our committee, and we have. We've approved it through Intercontinental Hotel Group. But it was with those provisions of parking, and it's in our license agreement with R3.
Okay, how about the wages? Do you have any recommendation that what the minimum they have to pay to the employees?
In this particular situation, in a franchise situation, we do not, we can't, we don't recommend that. They have a management company that they're going to be under contract with. We're the brand, and, you know, we don't have any recommendations on that.
So whatever they pay, it's fine with your company?
No, I didn't say that either. So, no, that's not the case. We monitor, and I'm likely the management company talk, here they are.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Greve, I'm with Intermountain Management. We manage and own about 70 hotels throughout the U.S., and we are...
You say 70?
About 70, yes. And we own approximately 50% of our portfolio, and we are honored to have R3 as a developer. Most recently, one of his hotels, he has actually invested and has other properties, including IHG Hotels. And one of his properties, one of the most prestigious awards within IHG for guest service and for overall hotel performance. So with that, our management company, with this property projected to open somewhere around 2020, the prevailing, or the minimum wage, rather, that was approved for Los Angeles County of $15 would be somewhere of a starting point. But obviously, what we do when we come into a market is we do a wage survey. So we'll assess the local hotels, see what their wages are, and we will go from there. We obviously are not going to have a set wage at this time, but our wages certainly are competitive. We offer full medical, full dental benefits for the employees of our company. I personally have been employed with them for nearly 10 years. I started out as a general manager at one of their hotels, and I'm currently now Senior Regional Director of Operations. In terms of quality of life, you're also looking at someone who started at the front desk of a hotel, of a Holiday Inn. I'm a local as well. I don't live in Glendale, but I also, I did work here in Glendale for some time. So there's certainly a quality and a living wage that you can have working in this industry. And working in this industry for over 20 years, I'm proud to say that I have done that myself and would encourage and certainly look to the local community as we hire. We would want folks from Glendale to work and to be proud of the hotel that they're working in, without a doubt. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm not done. I did not get it. Is there a minimum that you guys are not go lower than that?
Well, obviously, we wouldn't go lower than what the law is, but again, depending on when the project is going to open, well, no, your current minimum wage is, I believe, 1350. So depending on the position...
Did you not say that you were going to look at starting point as the LA's minimum, which is 15?
Well, because yours is going to go up in 2020, right? So obviously, our hotel's not going to open tomorrow.
So that's the minimum you're hearing?
Right, so when it does open, you'll be at that wage, which is 15. So that's where we would have to start legally. We couldn't start any lower.
Okay.
So having 70 hotels in your portfolio, you must have some relationship with Unite Here, or another local?
We're throughout the U.S., so no, we don't have a specific relationship with them, no, because we have hotels throughout the United States.
So it might be a good thing to do that, but isn't having a steady, no, 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 please, please, please. I mean, isn't it a good, it is a good thing, isn't it, to have a steady labor force with low turnover and dedication and all that?
Yes, and we certainly have that reputation, and we're very proud of that, and we will certainly engage with any, you know, anyone and to discuss, but, you know, that's, I'm not the corporate human resources, but I can certainly speak to...
With the fluid nature of hotel pricing, and anyone who has looked at hotel pricing, gone on hotels.com or whatever, I mean, the rates are very, there's quite a significant range in them. So wouldn't any extra expense in labor costs or benefits just be passed on to the guests? I mean, that's nothing that would eat out under your own bottom line. Let's say you had a, let's say you had a higher-than-expected, anticipated labor and benefits cost in your business model. Wouldn't that be passed on largely in higher rates to the guests?
Well, we would have to be competitive, so if we wanted to increase our rates, we would have to be sure that that would be what the demand will buy.
Yeah, I think Indigo, this brand, and it's a very unique brand, and that's why we pursued this brand, would have a very unique position in the marketplace of Glendale. So it's not like they're going to be comparing it to another, an Indigo across the street or that type. There are other hotels coming.
And we'll definitely have to be competitive, yeah, so I see where you're going with that. And with the brand, with the level of service, with the amenities, it's going to be, and just with the labor force, you know, we're experiencing with, you know, all throughout, is that you're definitely going to have to be competitive, and we certainly will be.
I'll tell you, I was here, I'm the oldest guy on the council, well, I've been here the longest.
You're the oldest guy.
I've been here the longest, and I went through, I remember, the first time I was mayor, I went through, actually, the whole council in the city went through a rather uncomfortable spell at the Red Lion, where there was a labor action at the Red Lion. In the end, I believe that they eventually saw the light and embraced the benefits. I mean, not so much thought about the cost of hiring unions, but the benefits of having union employees. I'm hoping that that's something that we can get to. I don't want to have that sort of disruption that we had, I mean, it was the mayor's prayer breakfast, and we're out there, and it was full force, you know, advocacy, let's put it that way, for their position. So I'm hoping that there's a way that you can form a relationship, and I can't dictate anything from here. Our council can't dictate that you must hire a union, but I'm hoping that you develop a relationship and understand some of the issues, and maybe there'll be some common ground where the management of this hotel would be staffed with the very best labor force and make it a real proud example for all of us in Glendale.
Absolutely.
May I ask her a question?
Yes, of course.
Do you usually pay living wage, or do you sometimes pay prevailing wage? What are the possibilities of prevailing wage?
Again, typically for what we do when we walk into, and this is with any hotel management company, is you assess the area and the local economy and what those wages are versus what you, you know, because that, again, will affect your room rate, depending on where your labor is. But it depends on the position, it depends on what the other hotels in the area or businesses alike that are charging, and again, and the market, and, you know, this is more of an urban, this is higher cost of living, so wages will be something that will have to be heavily considered and seriously looked at. And in some cases, you know, the minimum wage, it's not going to be enough, and you're going to have to look above that, and we certainly do in many markets. We have hotels in downtown Seattle, and we paid well above minimum wage, which they, you know, the first to go to 15. So it certainly isn't out of the ordinary and something that we haven't done before.
Okay, thank you. No further questions? Okay, I'm going to close, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we can go to comments. I'm going to start the comments, and here's why. Usually I don't, as mayor, I always go to my colleagues, but I literally stand at the origins of this whole process, but not alone, with other council members, with staff, and I'll go into a little background, because, you know, I think our city manager said that this has a long history, and it does, it really does, and it's important for us to revisit how this came about. So sometime in 2014, our economic development staff, Phil Lanza Fain, was an integral part of that process. Our former city manager, Scott Ochoa, was very important, I think he was a major driving force behind that. We did an assessment of what is it that we need for downtown to sort of complete the type of downtown that we were looking to have. And the one thing that we identified, which was sorely missing, were hotels. Hotels, and specifically, we wanted boutique hotels. Why boutique hotels? Because we also identified clearly the fact that we lack the real estate to have mega hotels and sort of the other markets that other types of hotels covered were already there. So we even narrowed it down to specific brands, and it so happened that Indigo was number one on that list, number one. And we went to ICSC, 2014, went to ICSC. We went up to ISG Group, went up to them, and we said, hey, we're from Glendale, we're interested in you, we want you to come to Glendale, we want you. Glendale wants you to be in Glendale. And at the time, we got, we, you know, it sort of didn't really go anywhere. There was no continuation to that dialogue. 2015, we were back at ICSC. Again, we went up to them, we said, listen, hey, we haven't lost interest. If I remember the gentleman's name, Cunningham, Rich Cunningham, or Skip Cunningham, anyway, that's who we spoke to, and he said, you know what, we've started doing research on Glendale. Okay, you know, we'll talk to you, what's going on? And that was the beginning of this process. The point I'm trying to make that is that we wanted Indigo in Glendale, we were going out of our way to have them come to Glendale. And they said, okay, we'll come, and the process started. And that's, in order to entice them to come to Glendale, we offered them at the time, at the time, we showed them some lots that were possible options for this hotel. And that's how the parking, public parking came into play. So it's not that, you know, some developer came into town and, you know, somehow staffed behind the scenes, did favors for them, and allowed them to somehow get, you know, advantage over someone else. No, 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 we went, we asked them to come. That's the reason we're talking about a public parking lot right now. And this public parking lot, by the way, you know, some folks spoke, and it made it sound as if, oh, giving away the parking lot, why, that's unconscionable. No, they're going to replace the parking lot, every space of it. So that's not an issue, really. Yes, there will be disruption during the construction period, for which we'll jointly have to make some contingencies, but fundamentally, that space is going to get replaced. Now, when it comes to parking spaces, statements were made that, oh, you know, parking lots are full. Of course, the city parking lots are full, but I challenge you to go to our hotel parking lots and take a look at what's happening there. At the Hilton, at the Hilton, unless there is a public function taking place in the afternoon, the parking lot is empty. Go to the other parking lots on the hotels along Colorado, parking lots are empty, about 40% empty all the time. Why is that the case? Why are the parking lots so empty at the hotels? Because the fact is, people don't rent cars when they go to hotels. When it comes to boutiques, my understanding is people are even less likely to rent cars because young people are more likely to go to boutiques and stay at boutiques, and they, you know, nowadays, young people don't even know how to drive cars. TNCs, the, you know, the Ubers and the Lifts of this world, that's what happens, that's what they use. I sit on the Burbank Hollywood Airport Authority, and so does my colleague, so she should know this, that every year, year upon year, I've sat a little longer than she has, every year, year upon year, there is a sharp drop in the amount of parking revenue that we're receiving from our parking lots, every year. And guess what? There is a commensurate increase in the amounts that we're receiving as revenues from the TNCs. Why? Because people aren't parking anymore. They just don't park, they get in an Uber, they get in a Lyft, and they get to the airport. That's just the trend, and that trend, by all indications, is going to intensify and escalate in the near future. We're going to end up in a situation where we have these empty shelves throughout the city, empty parking lots that are not utilized by residents, just because that's life, that life is changing, and it's certainly changing in the direction of folks not using cars for parking lots. So this parking lot issue, I mean... I mean, sure, if you don't want a project to succeed, you can use that, you know, a dogma, a dogma of, you know, it's got to be one, you know, one per one, that's the limit and that's the norm and that's how it has to be parked. You can use that excuse and defeat anything. But what's the purpose of that? What's the point? There's a reason that parking requirement is there. And there's a reason that the trend is to decrease that parking requirement everywhere. In terms of the public land, why aren't we using it for affordable housing? Why aren't we using it for parks? You know, if you're familiar at all with the process that is required in order to bring into existence any affordable housing project, you'll know that just having an empty lot is a miniscule part of the issue. I mean, you have to secure 100 other things to come afterwards. Most importantly, you have to have the funding. Well, how does a city like Glendale get funding? Well, hotel TOT taxes are a good revenue. And for years, for years and for decades, Glendale has lagged behind both Pasadena and Burbank in terms of transient occupancy taxes. And we're trying to reverse that because obviously, if Burbank Airport is closer to Glendale, but somehow Pasadena ends up with more tourists, something's wrong with the picture. And the numbers don't lie. They have more hotel space than we do. They have cooler hotels than we do. We're trying to rectify that situation. The issues that are presented in terms of sort of the open space, again, there's, you know, there's a portion of that open space that actually far exceeds the requirement and there's a portion of it that's narrower. So again, if you're looking for a reason to jinx or nix a project, yeah, you can use that, of course. But the question is, why? Why? What's the end result? What do we gain from it? The economic impact from this project and projects like this is going to be huge for everyone. For the city of Glendale, in terms of, you know, the lease that they're going to pay in the long term, in terms of the TOT that they're going to pay every year, and that's a very large number, I assure you. It's a large number. In terms of the employment that it's going to provide for our local residents, hopefully, and also not local residents, is going to be huge. I think it's a healthy proposition to impose a 15% local hire requirement on the developer. I think that's a fair thing to do. I think we owe it to ourselves to make sure that if construction and then services are being provided, that locals are being hired. I think that's what our friends from the union were for also. So we're definitely on the same page on that. The other technical issues, again, I didn't hear any technical issue that is in any way significant and somehow should be grounds for rejecting this project. As my colleague, Aron Najarian, said, you know, I can't imagine this going forward and this hotel functioning without there being an understanding with the labor union. Because, again, if Hilton is any lesson, you know, we saw what happened and it was unnecessary and it was painful for everyone involved. And I don't doubt that that's going to end up being the case. So having said that, I am in support of this project. I think it's going to be a huge contribution to, it's a totally new thing for Glendale, boutique hotel. Our staff has worked really hard and it has gone out of their way to make sure that they work with the community, with the developer, and to make sure that we have a product, at the end of the day, that we're all going to be proud of. And I look forward to it. So I'm going to support this project. And with that in mind, I'll go to Council Member Najarian.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Sananian. So, couple thoughts. And let me sort of start with the detailed issues and components of what we're doing. With regard to parking, there is a significant number of parking spots in private parking structures a block or two blocks away from this project. I'm talking about all the high rises that are on brand that start at the 300 block of brand. And if the numbering is consistent, it's the 300 block of brand parking structure is one block away from this 231 North Maryland. And the parking entrance is on Maryland. That's a huge parking structure. There's a parking structure just to the north of that, the 400 buildings. And above that, the 500 building, and above that, the 550. Those, there are probably, let me just make an estimated guess, 3,000 parking spaces available. How is that, is that a ballpark? I know, each one probably has a 600, 700, even more perhaps, available. Those are the office buildings that clear out at night. Not even night. They leave a lot earlier now. Four o'clock, folks are clearing out. Those structures are going to be wide open. I want to make sure that, and I don't think it will be a burden on the management company to obtain rights to park, to valet park in particular, the hotel guests that need, that will not fit onsite. And again, there's a whole question about, is even the .8 per room a legitimate parking standard? It may well be .7. But I want to make sure then, that all the spots that are deficient have availability and rights to park in those private, presumably private, if not public. The only problem with the Maryland garages, we've given a lot of use to that. The Lembly lofts are coming in, there's a lot of use there. But should the Lembly lofts fill up, I want to make sure that there's parking availability. And I know it's there. Buy a few key cards and overflow, let the valet attendants just park in those other spots. I'm sure that is a possibility. You know, there's a deal to be made, I'm sure, on that, at much less than a regular monthly parking rate because they're sitting vacant from four o'clock on. As far as the FAR goes, and I really, you know, when I was reviewing this project on the FAR, and they wanted 3.25, and I say, gee, that's above even what the incentives were giving them, I asked staff, what would the FAR be if it took into account the alleys which the project is maintaining and operating? And Dennis said it's 2.9 something. So when I look at it, I'm really not looking at this as a 3.25 FAR, but more of a 2.9. So that issue doesn't really bother me. I'm happy that the height is less than what could otherwise be built. So these folks aren't maximizing the height. They're not making the, turning into this, this into the tower that they could otherwise be doing. They're a good 10 feet below what they could do. I believe 90 feet was the height limit and they're down in the 80s, the low 80s. I'm glad that the hotel is going to be bringing jobs in to the city, both construction jobs as well as jobs in management. And we heard from the young lady and she got her start at the front desk of a Holiday Inn. And now she is a, I think, a well-respected executive in this field. Hopefully, there will be others given that opportunity. I'm happy that it's going to be giving work opportunities to those at the entry level of the hospitality business. I very much want some sort of relationship to develop. And listen, I'm a Republican, okay? I'm not the Democrat on this. And for me to feel this way, I think it's really something from my heart that there's really a need to get the hard-working hotel employees, I don't even, I don't want to say minimum wage, I want to say a living wage, a wage that they can live on. And I hope that, and I can't dictate that, but I hope that there's some, some relationship that's built between the two parties on that regard. Lastly, I'll start at the end where Mr. Sananian started. I think the Hotel Indigo is going to be a cool addition to our downtown. It's going to have a restaurant, it's going to have a certain flair about it. And we will be working hard to bring guests into your hotel. We're doing a lot in that immediate area. We're knocking ourselves out in downtown, making downtown Glendale a really great place to visit. So, you know, as we're sort of putting these, you know, restrictions on you and obligations, you're not in it alone. I mean, the city council is there. We want that to be a very successful and profitable hotel for you. We want you to get the profit. We want it to be a place where folks can come into downtown Glendale and stay. And yes, folks that come into downtown Glendale visiting are going to be flying into Burbank and they're going to be taking, as was said, an Uber, a Lyft, or those strange yellow vehicles that we, you know, we used to see all around. Some people still use them, the taxis. So we're going to see a lot of that in the future. And I'm sure that's going to be really relieving a lot of the pressure for the parking. I'm sorry for the dentists and the other tenants in that building. Your hard time is going to be during the construction phase. We promise to work with you. We'll work with you and get your clients and patrons a solution to the parking during that time. But when it's done, they're going to have a great covered garage with an elevator and a doorman, and opening a door for them if they take the elevator from inside. I think it'll be a great environment. It will certainly add some prestige to your practice. You know, I'm right across from the Indigo Hotel. And I'm on your end of the analysis, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm in favor of it. I'm not, you know, I have to say that I hope that some of my aspirations become a reality with regard to just one or two of those issues. But I would require, I mean, to get specific, I would require that we have a condition, is that the proper word, place, condition, the approval conditioned on obtaining rights to sufficient off-site parking for the guests, not for their own use, but via the valet, via the valet service. I mean, I wouldn't expect the guests to park.
I would join that requirement as well. So 30 spots or 32, however it is.
I think once the council's completed, your comments, we'll try to nail down the specifics.
We'll hit the number down, but that's what I'd be looking for. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I can't say that I disagree with a lot that Councilmember Najarian and Councilmember Sananian have said. I too want, I would love to see this hotel there. I think it would add to the vibrancy of our downtown. I think it would be a great place for our guests coming to Glendale to stay. However, call me dogmatic, I happen to be a believer in codes and ordinances and that's why we have them. They are there for a reason. And so I'm going to attack my responses in order that they appear on the agenda. And I thank everybody and I do appreciate all the work went into this from staff, from the architects, from everyone that's been involved in this project. First of all, I'm going to abstain from the addendum vote because the addendum describes a project and contains language that I believe is inaccurate. Some of the specific language includes the project would fully comply with the open space requirements of the DSP, and I don't believe that that's true. Parking would be provided onsite and comply with code requirements. That is not true. And I'm happy to hear the council, my colleagues are going to work on that. Second, the motion adopting findings to approve a variance to allow an FAR of 3.26. I cannot make the findings necessary to approve this variance for the following reasons. First of all, I believe that any practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in regard to this variance request were self-imposed. The self-imposition arose when the developer added the area of a relocated alley to the area of the original lot and designed a building based on a lot size greater than permitted, resulting in an FAR that exceeded a maximum code or DSP requirement. The DSP states that under no, and I'm quoting, "Under no circumstances shall any project exceed the maximum allowable floor area ratio shown in Table 4A, which is 3.0." And since council is now in the process of reviewing the DSP incentives, and I was surprised that one of the speakers mentioned this, "With the intent of addressing and controlling construction in the DSP area, I believe it would be counterintuitive to grant any type of variance for projects in the DSP area at this time." Staff indicates that the intent of the FAR, the intent is to control the size, scale, and mass of this project. The reduction of the size of the building by 6,000 square feet, that's the excess floor area, would be insignificant and not noticeable. That was in staff's report. I agree with staff on this point. However, I believe that an FAR also controls density, number of residents, number of guests, congestion in the surrounding area, and parking. While the 6,000 square foot reduction will not impact the size, the mass, or the scale of the building, I believe that it would result in reducing the density of the project by eliminating some of the guest rooms and the parking required for the guest rooms. Therefore, I will be supporting alternate number three for the motion to deny the variance and direct the developer to redesign the project to comply with code. The next one is the motion adopting findings to approve this 58-space parking exemption. I can't make all the findings necessary to approve the parking exception for the following reasons. As an alternative to providing onsite parking, the required parking spaces can be provided with an off-site parking agreement, which is what we're talking about tonight. I don't know that utilizing our parking structures is the way to go. We have people that complain about there is no parking all the time. And now, we're going to give parking to a hotel so that they can put their overflow there. And that, to me, is, again, counterintuitive. The parking issue was discussed at length at our last council meeting, or actually, it was December 19. And council voted four to one to adopt the requirement that they, you know, that they get off, they secure off-site parking, which, again, they're going to talk about and I hope it comes to fruition. The parking exception will not serve to promote specific goals and objectives of the adopted plans for the Glendale redevelopment department areas because it will not promote the general welfare and economic well-being of the area. The lack of parking in the downtown is much discussed, as I said, and granting an exception for 58 spaces will promote the general welfare or will not be material detrimental to public welfare in the vicinity is just not realistic. It just isn't to me. And, you know, when we're talking about this and, you know, the parking of the guests, we're forgetting about the employees, the restaurant parking, and others. So I just don't see it being realistic, what we're thinking of doing. And also, as was stated, the International Traffic Engineers and Urban Land Use Institute, those were the two entities that were mentioned, that have determined that a one-to-one parking ratio just for hotels is excessive and that more appropriate ratio would be .7 or .8. While this may be true, it is not currently allowed by the Glendale Municipal Code. Why do we have codes if we're going to just issue variances and exceptions? When this subject came up several months ago, staff was given the opportunity to draft a code change. I asked for that, addressing this issue so that it wouldn't keep coming up time after time, and so that we could lower the hotel parking ratio. To date, nothing has been presented to council and therefore I cannot approve this. And to make matters even worse or better, whichever way you're looking at this, we recently approved planned hotel projects, including the Louise Hotel, Aloft Hotel, the Holiday Inn, and the AC Hotel. And they have provided the required one-to-one parking and have not been granted or asked for parking exceptions. Therefore, I will be supporting alternative number three for this motion and deny the parking exception. Lastly, the, or not lastly, I'm sorry, the motion approving stage one and two design. You know, I like and support, as I said, the concept of the hotel on this site, and I think the architecture is great. I think the architecture is great. And actually, I was noticing, I was comparing the architecture with the Aloft Hotel, and you did with the windows in this hotel what I wanted you to do in the Aloft. You put them horizontally and not diagonally. It looks spectacular. However, I cannot approve Stage One and Two design because the project is designed with an FAR of 3.26, which exceeds the maximum allowable in the DSP. The project lacks the required parking, and the 10-foot-wide by 83-foot-long walkway that's being counted, it's being counted as a portion of the publicly accessible open space on the west side of the building does not meet code requirements. Open space requirements in Section 5.3 states in part, "Front setbacks, plazas, courtyards, and paseos shall be considered open space." The subject walkway does not comply with the definition, standards, or guidelines specified by the setbacks for plazas, courtyards, or paseos. All, it states, and I'm quoting again, "All open space shall be expansive and uninterrupted with a minimum dimension of 20 feet by 20 feet." That alley is 10 feet wide. Once you put benches and a fountain, it's going to be five feet wide. Totally, there is no public benefit to that. The subject open space does not have that minimum. Council actually recently rejected a project on Kenwood, and I don't know if you all remember this, that attempted to count a 10-foot-wide walkway as publicly accessible open space, and we directed staff to prepare a report recommending how this loophole can be corrected. Not done. Therefore, I will be supporting alternate number three on this motion as well, deny Stage One and Two design and submit for redesign. And finally, introduction of the ordinance approving a 55-year ground lease and parking maintenance operation. I can't introduce or support the ground lease ordinance unless and until the need for any variances and/or exceptions are eliminated and the project is designed and built by right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Najanian?
Yes, you guys said whatever I could possibly say.
Thank you.
Everybody said that. Okay, first, I want to talk about this parking issue for outside, for overflow traffic. I think we have in this package, it's talking about on page, it says 1 of 17 in the back of this package, "Public parking operation," it says, and Item C talks about that, exceptions that requires least to secure 56 of site parking, which, last time when we were discussing, I agreed to have something like 30 parking, but I want to make sure that we definitely will have that extra 30 parking. So, FAR, they considered with the alleyway or the alley, and now it's under three, so I let that go. I want to make sure that we have 0.8 parking stall per room to make sure we are not going lower than that, and to make sure the valet attendants will be available at all times. Because I believe recently Lyft and Uber took away the passengers of taxi. I mean, I've visited Embassy Hotels, Hilton, and few others, just a few months ago, like four months ago, and I can tell the parking lots are empty at this time. It shows that people, they are using Lyft or Uber or some other means to get to the hotels probably is cheaper or easier to pay to the Uber and come to the hotel and not to pay the parking, not to pay for the parking in the hotel because recently are very expensive. I also visited downtown, the hotels in there, again, four months ago, not recently, and I saw the parking lots are empty. I want to make sure that we are not paying less than $15 per hour to employees, and if it's possible, living wages, or pay whatever Los Angeles city paying to the hotel employees. I mean, to be comparable or pay whatever Los Angeles is paying to hotel employees. And I want to make sure that 15% local hire, we're going to have people who live in Glendale to be employed by this hotel, at least 15% of the employees to be Glendalian's. And as I offered last time, I'm hoping the hotel owner will donate $250,000 to the, our account toward affordable housing. Last time, there was another hotel owner agreed voluntarily to pay $250,000 because we need affordable housing in Glendale. These are the conditions which I have.
Okay. The last condition is illegal, I think. I'm quite sure it's literally.
They can volunteer.
When you're saying it is them volunteering, you're saying it is already. If you condition your vote on that, Mr. City Attorney, you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, with respect to any of these conditions, because the city is the property owner and is entering to a lease, they could be made a conditional lease. Now, those are not the terms that we've been negotiating with the other party. So, I think that's a discussion that would need to be had. And quite frankly, well, I would suggest the part, their starting point in the negotiation will be, will pay that, but that'll have to come out at least. That's probably part of the discussion that will have to be had. But again, these conditions, because it's our property, there's a little bit more latitude than we would have if it were a private project. So, I don't know if you want to take me into order, or you want me to give.
Excuse me, last time, the owner voluntarily came forward, and he said it's okay with me. So, maybe they do that the same thing. Who knows?
You're inviting him up?
Yeah. I invite the owner to come forward and see if he's in position.
Frankly, I don't think this is fair. I mean, to put this on.
People can't find affordable housing. Why, it's not.
No, I mean, if we were negotiating this, I think that would have been great. But this is, you know, here we are on the cusp of a vote. It's a, you know, where your vote may make the difference between a tie or not happening, that we've dropped this bomb on. I just, I am 100% for affordable housing, and I'm 100% for as much contribution from our private industry, but you just can't drop it on them like that.
They may come forward and volunteer.
Okay, I won't speak for them.
I just want to see the owner if will come forward and will volunteer for that. We are suffering with not having enough affordable housing. So, everybody should participate.
Would the city attorney care to apply? I mean, the city mayor?
I'm thinking through the negotiations that have occurred, as you stated, Mr. Najarian, for us to be here this evening. I think it would behoove us to go through the conditions that you are all comfortable with placing on the possible approval of this project and see if there is consensus among the four of you or the majority of you to move forward with some of the conditions. But understanding where Mr. Agajanian's coming from as it relates to affordable housing needs, as you all have made it a priority in terms of the needs of this community, and it has shown in the policies that you have made at this dais as it relates to affordable housing. So, I understand the desire to want to put that in there, but I think it's unfair to do that at this point. Now, the developer's, you know, free to come up here and say anything that he may want to, but in my opinion, it is unfair to do this at this juncture.
Okay, hold on, before this turns into, so you, now, after that last thing, I kind of lost track of the conditions that you had, but I'm assuming you had, you agreed on the condition of them having to provide the 30 or 32 spots parked. How many is it?
I think the number was 30. So, the 30 would get, 30 off-site spots would get them to 0.8. It would get them to 0.8.
They will have to do that. Okay, so that's a condition that we agreed on.
They have to get 55. So, 250 is like nothing. They have to get 55 off-site parking.
I think that was, just to be clear, I think there was a discussion from the prior meeting about 30 additional spaces. They're still technically made the request to not have to provide those spaces, but I think, as you heard them today, they're okay getting to the 0.8 with off-site. That's what I heard, and if they disagree, they can say it. But I don't, yeah, there wasn't a requirement in the off-site, sorry, the parking exception that they get 58 off-site spaces. There was a reference to it in one of the residuals of the agreements, but I don't think it was, it was a mandate.
Okay, so there is, I think there's a mandate. I'm trying to understand.
The mandate's whatever the council decides to make.
Right. So, there is a man, you know, Councilmember Najarian brought it up, or maybe I brought it up first, whatever. That's a mandate from the two of us. I'm trying to understand if it is or is it not a mandate, if it's not something that Councilmember Agajanian wants or doesn't. Trying to understand, you want the 30, for that, for them to have the condition of having to fulfill the 30 off-site spots?
Right.
Yes, okay, all right. So, next step. Next step is 15% local hire. That's the condition for me. That's a condition for you. Is that a condition for you? Okay, 15% local hire. Was there anything other than those two and the $250,000?
I go along if you provide, if he provides the 250 toward.
Well, that's not, yeah, that's not a condition from us, but I guess, you know, he wants.
What's that?
He raised that issue.
The option he voluntarily will come forward.
It's up to the mayor and council whether to call the developers up.
I don't know if you want to come up, you don't want to come up, just, am I opening the public hearing there?
I think you can ask specific questions without reopening the hearing.
I would like to ask if that's legal, you know. I don't know what, I don't know the terms that I'm asking, you know, going to where, where is that going? These are normally, I ask people, are you wearing a wire, and do I have to call the FBI? I don't know what you're asking. You know, the question, where is the money even going? Is there a side?
I think, I think the request is for, well, it's not a request. The suggestion, as we had a prior project, as I think you're aware, that there was a 250,000 contribution to the city's affordable housing fund, so it wasn't like it was going to anybody in particular. That's what the suggestion is. So, I think the question is, what's your response to that?
I would, I would like to look into more of what it is instead of just being here at the council and just asking, you know, for 250,000 off. I mean, what if next is 500,000? I don't know.
You know what, I'm going to adjourn this meeting now because obviously, there is an impasse on this issue, and, I mean, you know, they want to look into what it is that is being asked of them.
So, you would like to continue the item to?
No, I'm going to continue this item. I'm not going to open public hearing. Not going to happen. We're just going to come back and vote once we have an answer or understanding or whatever the case may be, but.
And I guess, before we do that, Mr. Mayor, our staff clarification needs are to make sure that we understand Mr. Agajanian's request. Is it, is it if the developer's volunteering? And if they don't volunteer that, that $250,000, that may change the conditions that you're placing on the item? We just need to understand that piece possibly?
Yes, it's possible.
Okay. So, then we would have to get more information on it.
And if I, if I could just, a couple, a couple additional points, if you are going to continue, Mr. Mayor, on the 30 spaces, I think the way, in order to put that condition on the entitlements, it'd probably most appropriate to put that in the parking exception as a conditional rule to the parking exception, 30 off-site spaces. I think what we were thinking as a staff would be, the term of our ground lease is 55 years. I think what we've heard so far from the applicant is that that, getting an off-site parking agreement for that long is not something that's feasible. What you're looking at is perhaps a five-year time, five-year terms, five-year increments.
Then we can reassess it.
And then they can, they can come to us for reassessment within that period. We'll draw it up that way. Since we're bringing it back, we can draw it up that way. I just want to make sure council's okay with that. And then.
You mean, after five years, we reevaluate?
Correct.
I'm okay with it.
And then 15% local hire, and then I did hear, and I apologize if I didn't hear the follow-up council discussion about this, about the wage. Was it a?
15% local hire.
That's local hire, but in terms of the wage, is it?
Commensurate with the city of Los Angeles.
Well, and I want to make sure.
That's in two years.
County and city are different, so that's.
That's not minimum wage. There's a special wage.
There's a wage for county.
For hotel workers in.
In the city of Los Angeles, which I think is different than.
How much is that?
I don't know. And that's the thing, I don't want to put that in there until we kind of get some more information, I guess we could. I think what the speaker from the hotel management company is referring to is just the county's minimum wage is going up to $15 an hour, starting.
But she also mentioned that they might look into going higher and prevail, to prevailing wage or the higher than living wage. That might be a possibility. So, can we put something in there to that effect?
Are you voting against the project, aren't you?
I am, but I'm fighting, but I, you know, I want to see the wages, yeah.
Again, I think what she spoke to was.
It looks like it's going to be passing, so let's get, I'd like to get.
I think what she spoke to, Councilmember Devine, was just a survey of what the wages are for comparable service at the time that they go online. Okay.
That would be fine, but not minimum wage, higher than, whatever's higher than.
I assume we don't want to continue to next week?
We don't want to, or we, what we do, why don't we?
Next week we have the grace and the IR item.
So, if we give you a motion to continue without further public notice, it's April 17.
There are motions. Do we need to take a vote on this?
Take a vote until April 17.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Sure.
Berpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. So, we have public, I think, public comments, five-minute portion of public comments.
Take a short break for them to get out and then.
Okay, take a short break.
And then inform Mr. Agajanian.
Mr. Agajanian, you conduct this hearing, I'm leaving.
Oh.
Just don't ask for $250,000 contributions.
Are you in recess now?
I'm in recess, I'm leaving.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we are back. Uh, now, the speaker, Daniel Brotman.
Mr. Mayor, this is oral communication portion. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. See, Mayor, Mayor, refer matter to appropriate Department for Investigation report, Mr. Brotman.
Okay, good evening. Um, I guess we, we won't have our new mayor here, but, um, have the rest of you. Um, my name is Dan Brotman, and, um, this is the last time I'll be able to speak to you on Grayson before next week's vote, at least in the five-minute oral communications. So, um, I'm not gonna get into any technical or financial issues. Uh, I wanna just talk about what I think the real question is, uh, that you need to consider, and that is whether enough thought and effort has gone in to looking at clean energy alternatives, and sincere and open-minded effort, okay? And it won't surprise you to hear that I think the answer is no. I've been saying that for six months now, uh, but last night, the Glendale Water and Power Commission also concluded that the answer is no. Uh, they are recommending that this council put a pause on the EIR and take more time to evaluate non-gas options, and that recommendation was approved unanimously. So whether or not you accept what either they have to say or what I have to say on the matter, there's another important point I think you need to consider, and that's public sentiment. You already know this, but it's worth repeating, that the organization I created just six months ago with three people now has 850 people. Um, between 500 and 600 of those are Glendale residents, and it isn't just a passive list that we have, that we send emails out to. You know well that, uh, 1,100 people wrote, uh, comment letters for the draft EIR, universally in opposition, uh, and it goes beyond that. We had, uh, 200 people, as you know, come out to one council meeting when we originally thought the, uh, Grayson issue was gonna be discussed, and then we had 500 more than 500 probably come out, uh, two weeks later. Um, these are not trivial numbers in a city like Glendale. I think we all recognize that. Um, I, I repeat these numbers because they, they demonstrate that a very large segment of the community is concerned about the project, either because of the climate risks, the air quality impacts, or the financial implications. Now, I'm not suggesting you oppose the project simply because it's unpopular, but the fact that so many people care this much makes it imperative, and I think this is the point, it makes it imperative that you go above and beyond to evaluate alternatives before spending $500 million on an all-gas project. Have we already gone above and beyond? It's obvious we haven't. From the time the project was first conceived, the intent has always been to build a gas plant. We went out to hire consultants, the RFP we used had an explicit requirement for expertise in gas generation technology. It was silent on expertise in renewable or energy efficiency. Um, so, of course, GWP got what it wanted, they got gas experts, and even if the people that put the project together were inclined to look at alternatives, I submit that they lacked the expertise to do so. Um, so it behooves you, I believe, to follow the commission's recommendations and not certify the EIR at this time. You can always come back to it. Um, next week, uh, Glendale Water and Power will tell you, uh, about liquidated damages and, uh, you know, on the notice to proceed, and they will claim that, that taking a pause will delay us three years. Where that comes from, I don't know, but that's what they will tell you. Um, I think those arguments are hollow, uh, as is their fear-mongering about the plant going down and the lights going out. I learned a long time ago to roll my eyes when a salesman tells me, "Act fast, the offer's about to expire." Um, one last thing, but I think this is a very, very important thing. Uh, the commission is recommending that Glendale Water and Power go out to market with an RFI. Um, they say the, the RFI should be technology and resource-agnostic, uh, and see what the market comes back with, what solutions are out there that we are not even aware of. Um, but I would respectfully ask that this not be done in a back room at GWP, but rather it be done in collaboration with a Citizens Advisory Panel of some sort. The details can be worked out, but the key really is to ensure that the process is above board and that residents fully trust the outcome, whatever it may be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Chinook Ramirez.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I wrestled with this situation that I never, um, discussed with anybody, but kept it to myself. But by God, today I will finally tell you what I felt as unfair and downright indignant with human reckless disregard. I'm going to address it to the councilwoman, Paula Devine, and other council members that may be culpable and immoral as well, something to ponder on. As many know, I've been coming to the 3:00 PM housing and meetings to address issues of homelessness, poverty, gang stalkings, stockings, shelters, motels, hotels, um, which are breeding grounds for crimes, and I do not trust the Indigo staff. You're gonna have problems, big time. Remember I said that. And the Latino violent wicked gang bangers and thieves, drugs, theft, violence, elderly abuse, conditions that contribute to human degradation and violence against women, no showers, no bathrooms, no laundry facilities, no kitchen areas, no lockers 24/7 for the homeless, and I have lived it in flesh and blood, and I don't talk about it out of my gluteus maximus, therefore, I'm qualified to speak. As the old adage says, "Experience, my friend, is the best teacher." Councilwoman Paula Devine made a comment that I will allude to where she said, "We don't want to be seen as being unfair," end of quote, when she was mayor and as councilwoman. If I was an only speaker on the public comment section, she would immediately give me three minutes, even when I was on time and submitted my speaker's card by 3:00 PM, though it says under oral communications, each speaker is allowed five minutes. Once, I almost got rung over by a bus on Spring and Temple 'cause I wanted to make my bloody bus connections. Well, today, April 3rd, 2018, there were two speakers, an African-American female and myself, and without any hesitation from the dais, we got five minutes each. No questions asked, no double looks among each other, um, and we got it. And, um, keep in mind, Councilwoman Paula Devine, fairness means fairness across the board to all in everything we do, no cutting corners. Furthermore, Councilwoman Paula Devine, I don't want no more and no less than what any other human being is rightfully entitled to, but I too sought fairness for a very long time, which you inhumanly denied me. Please don't climb the political corporate ladder on my pain and suffering, and in essence, I inferred that you gave the black female speaker humanity and validation and robbed me of those which I rightfully reclaim back in spirit today. But you see, I believe in myself and my abilities, even in the hardship situations of life that I'm in for whatever reasons I'm in, and I am not God and nor are you. Furthermore, I am 100% primetime legal law Biden citizen by the rule of law. Now, if you are a Glendale public servant and get offended by my words and not considering the crimes and crises that we have been, uh, subjected to and endured, then you are morally, ethically, legally, and politically unfit to take office. And/or if there's conflict of interest, simply remove yourself. I promise you, I won't get offended. In addition, keep in mind, I don't make a penny doing this. On the contrary, I do it with love to help others from falling into the same pitfalls that I have. Now, you also emphatically added in, um, in intergutal manner after my housing five-minute public comments that, um, that these things happen in LA, not in Glendale, and remember, we are in Glendale, and well, that was made a verbal suppression. But what you deeply failed to understand was that I made a comparison between LA and Glendale, and that the homeless and poverty is not just in Los Angeles, but in Glendale too, and then that our homeless United States military veterans are not just in Los Angeles, but in Glendale too, that the Latino violent wicked gang epidemic is not just in LA, but in Glendale too, that the robberies and storages and units and, uh, commercial, industrial, residential robberies are not just in LA, but in Glendale too, that the, all the hotels and motels are unsafe because they have no lock proofs. Theft is epidemic in LA and Glendale too. Violence against women is not just in LA, but in Glendale too, and gang stalkings are not just in LA, but in Glendale too. Sometimes I wish I could live in your honky-dory life, but the many, that there are many millions of people who are being gang stalked and are homeless, and they need to hear what we can provide them, and public safety is by far a priority. So today, I live on the streets and I will not be afraid, I will not be censored, um, nor will I be bullied, but life is sacred, life is beautiful, and in my gut nature, I have always been naturally high-strung and overly positive about life. I am blessed. Lastly, I wanna thank your Glendale security staff for taking care of my bags and the lovely gentleman who said he was honored to take care of my shopping cart from Ralph's. Thank you. Thank you. Somebody left their thing, please.
Well, Ms., Ms. Ramirez, I just wanted to say that if, if you were offended by my comment this afternoon, I do apologize. It's just that I was trying to keep you on track that we are in Glendale. Most of your comments are about, I, I don't often hear you, sometimes you do compare Glendale with LA, but today you were all about LA, and so I, I just was trying to keep you on track. You're a brilliant writer, I, I wanna tell you that, and, uh, I do, you know, I, I know that you have a right to be here, and I certainly did not wanna offend you, so please accept my apology.
Mr. Rippon? Mr. Rippon? Oh, he left.
Kate Unger.
Kate Unger? Or Kay Langer? Kate, sorry.
Hi, my name is Kate Unger. Uh, good evening, members of City Council. Um, I'm sorry to have missed giving, having the opportunity to wish Mayor Sananian congratulations in person. Um, but I'm sure that he and Councilmember Garpedian will be checking out my scintillating comments later on video. Um, I am, of course, here to talk about Grayson again, as I did last week. Um, I was, uh, at the GWP Commission meeting yesterday, and I had a couple of comments related to that and the EIR. Um, what's required to certify an EIR came up yesterday, and I figured, you know, you all have looked at enough that you probably don't need a reminder, so I'll give you one anyway. Uh, to certify an EIR, you'd have to certify that the EIR has been completed in compliance with SEQA, that you independently reviewed the EIR, and that the final EIR represents your independent judgment and analysis. Uh, I don't think this EIR is in compliance with SEQA, it has several flaws. Um, just very briefly, I think they include that the project description is both excessively detailed in information about the equipment and yet omits important information for evaluating the project's environmental impact and comparing it with alternatives. The project objectives are written so restrictively that it's virtually impossible for the alternatives to meet them. Um, and, as you know, of course, you don't need to act to certify or refuse to certify the EIR on April 10th. You have the option of deferring that decision as your commission has recommended and as I would ask you to as well. At the meeting, um, President Lau pondered whether it might be possible to replace one of the peaker units with more battery to reduce the gas generation at the plant. Uh, she also expressed a desire to remove one, or even better, both combined-cycle units. Those base-load generating units are designed to run the majority of the time. As a close neighbor to the plant, the idea of removing as much base-load as possible sounds really good to me, and I hope you seriously consider that. It also seems to me that that would be the best way to keep improving the renewables and zero-carbon content of Glendale's power content label. I think you all agree that that's an important goal and something that matters to you a lot. I don't really see how that goal can be met if there is a lot of base-load gas generation at Grayson, because every megawatt that's met with gas is a megawatt that's not being met with renewables. Uh, now, the, the RFI recommended by the commission, um, I'd like to ask, you make sure that that long list of project objectives isn't included as requirements for the RFI. I think it, it makes sense that the responses should address the basic goals and needs, but if you make it too restrictive, you won't be able to get good, robust alternatives. And finally, uh, at the GW Commission, there wasn't discussion about the potential of reducing peak demand as a way to help meet Glendale's needs. Um, commenters have offered suggestions for ways to incorporate peak-load reduction into an alternative project, so that's out there for you to look at, and I urge the council to seek information to incorporate demand reduction in the project. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. And, and just as a follow-up, I, I watched that GWP Commission meeting, and I thought it was a very good discussion. I thought the, the members of the commission did a, a very good job of, of analyzing and, uh, coming up with a, a solution that they, they feel, uh, is, is, um, doable, so, thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
But that's, that was not a conclusive reaction, so that's not binding on the council.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Just in case there was any...
Yeah, I wondered to compliment, though, the commission for their, their work.
Dean Walrath?
Good evening, councilmembers. Um, I appreciate you're giving me this five minutes to talk. Um, I'm gonna say a couple of things about Grayson again. Uh, I'm the Executive Director of Advocates for the Environment, which is a nonprofit environmental law firm and advocacy organization. Um, I, I wanna just mention climate change, uh, briefly, and then a point about SEQA.
Could you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, what?
Your name for the record?
Oh, Dean Walrath.
Thank you, Walrath.
Um, Dean Walrath. Looking back at this point in time from a thousand years hence, you know, in the year 3,000 more or less, this will be the time when we change the earth. This will be the time when we messed up the planet by increasing the temperature a few degrees. We're on a path right now to maybe 3, 4 degrees Celsius, um, just sort of business as usual, people keep doing what they've been doing, and it's going to have really catastrophic effects in terms of sea level rise and droughts, um, extreme weather events, um, probably loss of something like 50% of our biodiversity. We're gonna lose a lot of species, you know, on, on this planet because of this temperature increase, and the most important thing we can do to mitigate that, to, to reduce that, is stop burning fossil fuels. When you burn something, it puts carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, which basically, since it stays there for thousands of years, it increases the temperature for the foreseeable future. The way you stop the temperature increase is you stop burning fossil fuels. We're gonna have to do that completely across the whole planet. Nobody seems to be onto this yet, but under those circumstances, um, building another fossil fuel plant here in Glendale is really a bad move. Uh, I predict that the state of California, which is kind of a leader in this whole area of climate change, is going to, somewhere around 2030, 2040, say, "You can't run these fossil fuel plants." I mean, we don't, they've already driven out coal plants, we don't have any big coal plants in California, but natural gas plants, we're gonna have to stop running them, and that means projects like this are gonna lose a lot of their lifetime at the end. You know, the value of the project is amortized over a, a, a life, and you lose money if you can't use it for the last half of its useful life. So I thi, I think that's what's likely to happen. So Glendale should follow along with the rest of California in working to mitigate climate change, and, uh, really, should just send this project back to GWP with a mandate to find a solution that's based on renewable energy. Uh, point number two, kinda quickly on SEQA, I'm a, most of my practice as a, as a lawyer is as a SEQA litigator. Uh, I mostly sue, uh, cities and counties, um, and, and I've had three cases recently where I've been the lead attorney, two of them against, um, the County of Los Angeles over, related to New Hall rant, and one on a project in Highland Park for the City of Los Angeles where the EIRs or MNDs have been thrown out for bad greenhouse gas analysis. Um, you're kind of set for having that happen in this case. The, um, greenhouse gas analysis in the EIR is basically, we have this huge emissions, you know, you, you look at that number, it's really large, and then you come to a conclusion that it's not significant because you're going to be included in the cap-and-trade program, the state cap-and-trade. Problem is, cap-and-trade is a mitigation, so the proper way to do a, an analysis in an EIR for particular effect is to say, "Is it significant?" If it is significant, then you're required by SEQA to do all feasible mitigation, and that's where the cap-and-trade would come in. But using the cap-and-trade program to say it's not significant because we're gonna mitigate it, you're, you're not allowed to use mitigation that way to, to make the thing come out to be not, not significant. So, you know, just common sense, for a project like this, the greenhouse gas emissions will be significant, and the difference that would really matter if you did the EIR the right way on this is you, is the, the city would be required to do all feasible mitigation, which is what it should be required to do anyway. So you can power the city with renewables, I know you can, and I'm encouraging you to figure out a way to do it. Thank you.
Okay, I guess, uh, oral communication is closed, and are there any, uh, council member or new business? Are there any new business?
I have new business.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Agaganyan.
Okay.
I move that the City Council hereby approves and accepts, let me put my glasses on, $55,000 from American Contractors Indemnity Company pursuant to performance bond number 1001072167 as settlement of the city's claim for liquidated damages assessed against Salix Development Incorporated, the former contractor, under contract number C106478, for the fiscal year 2016, 2017 ADA curb ramp installation and pavement repair program and miscellaneous work at various locations project, specification 3594.
Second?
So, roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Uh, Garpedian? Najarian?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Sananian? And Mayor, uh...
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Agaganyan, thank you.
Okay.
Is there another new item of new business?
I do, I do. Um, I move that the city attorney is hereby authorized to, um, into a retainer agreement with the law firm of, uh, Jackson Titus to assist the city attorney in a matter. In addition to other provisions, the retainer agreement must contain a fee cap for work as assigned by the city attorney.
Second?
Roll call.
Thank you. Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Uh, Garpedian? Najarian?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Sananian? And Mayor Protem Agaganyan?
Yes.
There's no other business on the agenda?
Move to adjourn.
So we are adjourned at, what time is it?
9:54.
9:54.
Thank you.